Good morning. I apologize for my tardiness. There was a spinout on 126. I'd like to call the Planning Commission hearing to order and ask you all to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could the roll be taken, please?
Commissioner Leo Molitor.
Present.
Commissioner Nora Idukas.
Here.
Chair Bill Bartels.
Present.
Vice Chair Richard Rodriguez.
We come now to public comment period. This is a time set aside for comments by citizens on matters not appearing on the agenda. I have no card specific to this item. Moving on, approval of May 8th, 2008 minutes.
Recommend approval.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention?
Abstention.
Commissioner Dukas abstains. Approval of the May 15th minutes?
Move approval.
The motion. The second.
I have a question, Mr. Chair, on that. On page eight, the second paragraph about the wedding permit issues, I don't remember that. Was that? Okay. Fine, that's fine. Thank you. That was my question.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Moving on to item seven, general plan amendment number GP 080006 and corresponding amendments. Bruce Smith. Bruce, you... I thought Carl, but Bruce?
Yes, unfortunately, Mr. Morehouse, in one of his other capacities, had to be down at the Southern California Association of Governments meeting this morning and would not be back till late this afternoon, so I'm here in his stead. As was announced, this is a general plan amendment, and it also involves ordinance amendments, amendments to the non-coastal zoning ordinance, both with regard to text amendments and with regard to zone changes. The purpose of these amendments, in the way of background, is about a year ago, the Board of Supervisors, at the request of Supervisors Parks and Bennett, had requested that the county's overall regulatory approach to regulating land uses and development within the scenic resources of the county be updated, looked at again, made more efficient and more clear. In Exhibit 6, there's a background report that explains the reasons that were identified both by the board members and by staff as to be current issues worthy of clarification and correction. The fundamental approach, this is a two-phase process. The first phase is to deal with the countywide general plan land use, excuse me, Resources Appendix, as it deals with the subject of scenic resources from a countywide perspective. And then, corresponding to that are amendments to the scenic resources zone or overlay zone. And then Phase 2 will be actually looking at the policies contained within the Ojai Area Plan, as well as the Thousand Oaks Area Plan, and also to make some minor corrections to the Lake Sherwood Hidden Valley Area Plan with regard to protected trees. So this is Phase 1. And the fundamental change that we're proposing is that we have currently two overlay zones that purport to regulate development for scenic resources. They're similar and yet very different in some other respects. One dealing with scenic highway protection and the other dealing with the more generic scenic resource protection that deals with lands within the viewshed of lakes, but also areas that may be identified by an area plan within that particular community to be worthy of resource protection. With that, we have gone ahead and suggested, first of all, that the SHP zone, being more narrowly drawn, be eliminated and that the regulations contained therein, in large measure, be incorporated within the SRP overlay zone, and that that SRP overlay zone serve the purpose for both scenic highway protection, viewshed of lakes, and, as may be applied, in an area plan.
Okay. I'm sorry. Bruce, Commissioner Dukas.
I'm sorry. Could you go over those acronyms again?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, we live with these things day in, day out, and we forget that SHP is scenic highway protection.
I got that one. It was the other.
SRP is scenic resource protection.
I heard it wrong.
Okay. I do have some, before I go further, I do have a little bit of housecleaning to do. Exhibit 10, which was passed out to your commission this morning, makes a correction, both to a reference within your Planning Commission staff report. There was a reference to Section 1.7.5 of the Resources Appendix. That's actually incorrect. It's 1.7.3, and it's dealing with the issue of within one-half mile of a scenic highway. The other correction has to do with the proposed amendments to the ordinance in the second sentence of the paragraph that following subsection 4, if you can follow that, under policy 1.7.2-2, and that's on page 17 of your packet. You'll notice that some of the references to the preceding policies don't make any sense because there is not a section 5, parent 5. So we've corrected that, and the wording you have before you is the corrected wording. Also, in rereading this morning, I noticed that in the proposed recommendations, there's a misreference in your staff report at the end of the staff report, and I'll get you your, on page 15 of your pa... Excuse me, on page 14 of your packet. Under recommendation number 4, it says, "Find based on evidence presented in the Planning Commission staff report and public hearing that zone change 080006." That actually should be zone change 08008. Just to clarify and correct that misreference. There are a number of small changes. Rather than go into a lot of detail trying to explain all the particular changes, we did attempt to put a table in, as an exhibit, that compares the regulations that currently exist in both the SRP and SHP zones and those which are being proposed under the revised SRP zone. And that's, hopefully, that was helpful to you in following the proposed changes. At this point, let's see, is there anything I particularly want to highlight? One fundamental change is that both the SHP and the SRP currently require a conditional use permit. What is being proposed is a planned development permit instead. And the primary difference is between a conditional use permit, that in a conditional use permit, the use is not permitted by right, but only permitted if certain findings can be made of compatibility, both now and in the future. And that's why conditional use permits have time limitations. A planned development permit, on the other hand, is a use, which the use is permitted by right, but they need to do site plan review, and in the case of commercial industrial, operational conditions to make sure that they're compatible with the area surrounding them at the time they're developed. But a planned development permit does not have time limits whereby they have to come back at some point and renew or update their permit. In the SRP zone, we're talking about principally single-family dwellings on pre-existing lots. And in that particular case, the use is not in question. The question is, where should it be placed on the property? What should the colors be? What is the landscaping to be like? What sort of grading should be involved? That sort of review is much more appropriate for a planned development permit as opposed to a conditional use permit.
Can I ask you a quick question on that? Then, could, is there also a difference between the type of approval, that one's ministerial and another one is a discretionary permit?
No, they're both discretionary.
They're both discretionary.
They're both subject to the California Environmental Quality Act.
Okay. Thank you.
You'll notice that there are thresholds in the SHP zone now for both grading, structures, and vegetation removal. In the SRP, there's no, there are no thresholds for structures. There's only a threshold for grading and vegetation removal over, I think, an acre. The threshold values are very different. The biggest problem from staff standpoint is that there are, both zones express these threshold limits in terms of grading as volumetric measures, as cubic yards. The problem is, and I'm pretty good at math, it's very, very difficult to do volumetric verifications in the field by enforcement staff. When we get a call saying there's an alleged violation of the ordinance, we have to prove that a violation has in fact occurred. It's very, very difficult for us to prove that the violations occurred because we don't have the tools to do volumetric measurements. Instead, we're proposing a more simplified approach, which is essentially the threshold being grading or fill over 2 feet in height, and if it's less than 2 feet in height, not exceeding 1,000 square feet. So that would greatly simplify the threshold that staff has to use in the field. Also, the vegetation removal threshold is being lowered, like I said, from 1 acre in the SRP to 1,000 square feet, similar or identical to the SHP zone currently. We've taken efforts to try to clarify the development standard requirements in the zoning code. There were vague references to significant grading before. Well, that's an undefined term. So we tried to clarify what the, rather than use an undefined term, use more specific terms. And the specific development standards that we've proposed for ridge lines, night lighting. And we've also incorporated an exemption whereby that if the property owner can prove that the property or the structure or the grading that's being proposed is not visible from the public street or trail or park, then that shouldn't be subject to the, a discretionary permit. And they could just simply move to a zone clearance. You also received last night by visa email, but also hard copy was submitted to your commission this morning, on an email and an attachment to that email from Maureen Smith. That is shown as Exhibit A. And I'd like to provide, first of all, a little bit of clarification. The, their particular property is right on the edge of the SHP overlay zone as it exists today. It's right at the beginning, near milepost 17.5, that then goes north on Highway 33. Some of their properties are, well, the properties in question are partially in the SHP and partially outside. Obviously, we can show them on a more specific map. Their concern, I think, is, in part from confusion, the SHP zone, which they are currently under, requires the same, virtually the same threshold criteria for requiring a discretionary permit as what's being proposed for the SRP. And I think they were under the mistaken impression that they are currently zoned as SRP. And so from that perspective, if they were, yes, these recommendations would be more stringent than they are today. But in their particular case, they're subject to the SHP zone, so the standards are, for the most part, virtually identical. That's a short answer to their, to the points, general points raised in their particular letter. Obviously, if your commission has any specific questions, either with regard to the letter or with regard to the proposed amendments, I think I'll stop my presentation at this point and ask questions of your commission.
So you're saying, following up on your last point, you're saying that this property owners up in the Wheeler-Gorge area would not be required to adhere to the new proposed standards and can operate under the old standards for the purposes of remodeling or grading issues?
No. What I'm suggesting is that the previous standard, the current standards that apply to our property will be virtually identical to the standards which are being proposed. There will be no fundamental change.
When you say virtually identical, what is the disparity?
Well, the disparity comes from the fact that we are writing into the SRP zone. Let me first back up. What we did is we took the threshold values of the SHP zone and are incorporating them into the SRP zone. So it's 1,000 square feet of grading, it's 1,000 square feet of vegetation removal. The limitations on alterations to existing buildings are exactly the same, are what they are currently in the SHP. The differences are in the exceptions. Vegetation removal for protection for fire is required by the Fire Protection District. That would not be subject to a discretionary permit. That's just something that, that's an exception. The exception on, if they can prove it's not visible from the public street, that's an exception. The real differences have to do with the exceptions as opposed to the threshold criteria themselves.
Commissioner Dukas?
Is that proof that nobody can see it, is that within the half-mile?
Yes.
Why was a half-mile chosen?
Half-mile is what's considered the foreground. It's the distance at which details can actually be.
By whom? By who?
Oh, by.
Where does standard come from? Because it's been my experience that you might not see something a half-mile away, but if you're, you know, across the way, just a further distance. I know from my personal point of view, I can see something across the Cano Valley that's very impactful, five miles away, whereas a half-mile away, because of the intervening terrain, you don't see it at all. So I'm concerned about that half-mile and where that came from and how that standard was arrived at.
The half-mile is basically the definitions, which talk about foreground, middle ground, and faraway. Those distances were basically developed by U.S. Government Forest Service, and they were looking at, you know, what is the inherent differences in terms of distance? The foreground is, which is one-half mile, is the distance at which details are in fact visible. Like 2 feet is not particularly high, but depending on its location, within a half-mile, that can be visually impactful. Beyond a half-mile, the small details are not visible. Now, what may be visible is, past that distance, is especially when we're looking at larger developments, like a subdivision. Obviously, that's much more noticeable, but it's not noticeable so much by details, but by the massing. And realizing that the SRP zone was largely to capture those types of uses that were not otherwise discretionary. See, a single-family house is ministerial everywhere in the county, except in the SRP overlays. And in the SRP and SHP overlays. And in that particular case, the discretionary permit is required. In larger developments where there's a subdivision, that's requires a discretionary permit anyway. And the visual resources, of course, are looked at under the California Environmental Quality Act. So the large massing effects that you may see, either from a landfill. Simi Valley landfill was a visual issue. It was concerned well beyond one-half mile. That's a much larger project. That's a use which in and of itself requires a discretionary permit and had to be looked at from a farther distance with regard to scenic resources.
Again, I'm thinking about what the purpose of this whole thing was, getting back to what the charge was from the Board of Supervisors. And I can't believe that it was for efficiency and clarity, knowing who brought it forward. I have to think there had to be something about making it more protective or more conservative in preserving scenic resources. Is that something that you want to speak to?
Well, the SRP zone, first of all, currently doesn't even deal with the issue of structures. That's a big problem. Obviously, the threshold criteria is grading. Well, there may or may not be grading associated with the structure. It may be a 2 and 1/2 story structure. And yet, the SRP zone doesn't capture that. The specific issues of both Supervisor Parks and Supervisor Bennett, those will be largely addressed under Phase 2, as I mentioned, which are updates or amendments to the area plans for both the Ojai Valley and Thousand Oaks. In that case, both the area, which lands are designated and which lands would have this SRP zone would be looked at and readdressed, as well as are there any unique development standards? In the case of Thousand Oaks, for instance, under the guidelines for orderly development, the city's standards should be used. And so there's some, we haven't done a detailed review, but there's some concern that with time, the city may have changed their standards, and we have not kept pace. So in the context of the area plan, I would most certainly would agree that that's where those sort of protective standards would apply.
So would it be safe, would it be fair to say that we're developing standards, but we haven't pinpointed the problem areas that started this whole thing in the first place?
Well, we know a lot of problems, at least from the administrative standpoint. There's a lot of confusion by the public. There's a lot of problems with staff. There's a lot of problems with coordination with other agencies. Before we go trying to deal with the specifics in the Ojai Valley or Thousand Oaks area, we need to clean house, so to speak, as it applies to our regulatory authority and control. And so what this attempt is, at least have the regulatory mechanisms from a countywide perspective in place, and then deal with the more specific issues dealing with the Ojai Valley and Thousand Oaks area.
Okay. And understanding you don't want to make rules specifically for Wheeler-Hut Springs Trailer Park, right?
Correct.
You want to be able to have something that makes sense anywhere. Getting back to this letter about significant and it not being quantifiable. It seems to me that the omission does, that there are problems with a lack of flexibility and a lack of just judgment by the decision-makers, that that the decision-makers ought to have the discretion to decide whether or not something is significant or not, and use their best judgment. And then you don't have this worry that you didn't quite make the 2 foot, you know, that it's 1.999 feet, you know, or you didn't quite make the 1,000 square feet, you know, you're just under it and stuff. It seems to me by having those hard-line standards, you're removing some of the discretion and some of the good sense that could just come out of the decision-makers. What do you say to that?
The issue is how much does the county want to impose regulatory control? Because regulatory control means to the property owner a very expensive process. If at the end of the day, we have processed a permit that costs several thousand dollars, to find that, yes, you're 1 inch or 1 foot or 3/4 of a foot grading is not significant, that's an awful, there's a balance. So the challenge, anytime any governmental organization writes regulatory control, is there has to be a threshold. And it seems onerous because it's, oh, my gosh, I'm only 1 foot less or 1 inch less, or I'm 1 inch more. Why is that fair? Well, the line has to be drawn somewhere. So currently, we have.
And it can't be done the way it was before with significant?
No. Well, first of all, it was, that wasn't the, that was not really, the term significant is an undefined term. So by interpretation, it is the threshold criteria that exists in the SRP zone today.
Which was volumetric, which was an enforcement, which was an enforcement problem.
Right.
Commissioner Dukas, I'd like to just address one clarity that we're really trying to get at here is in the Ojai and in Newberry Park, there is this issue of this 50 cubic yards. So if you already had a grading pad somehow in Newberry Park where it was clearly visible, and you didn't trip this 50 cubic yard threshold for grading, it was a ministerial permit over the counter. So you could go forth, you could build your 35-foot-high white Taj Mahal, 20,000-square-foot monstrosity on the hillside. That I get to look at from 5 miles away? That you get to look at. So our code, which we're really trying to get at here, only addressed grading. It was built, the scenic resource protection zone was built on grading. So we could control the heck out of grading, but we couldn't really control what you built there. So if the pad was already created, it was a problem for us. So this is what this is getting at, to say grading exceptions, where we had the SRP in the chart on page 54 said SRP none, see grading, structure thresholds. The new planned development permit is new structures or reconstruction where expansion of 10% or where structure is 2 feet in height through 1,000 square feet. We're really trying to get at the visual, where before, I think that our SRP lacked the visual. It was all about grading. So that's the crux of what we're trying to get at here. We want to be able to have some discretionary review over what's built, over the landscaping. We want to be able to have some discretionary review over what's built, over the landscaping, besides just the grading or the slope. That's the result, because we've found that a lot of the pads were created. Somehow, we didn't know how they were created. We can look at aerials now, over the last 10 years, and see, well, that pad wasn't there before. But when the person comes before you with a stamp saying, "We're not doing over 50 cubic yards of grading. We're only doing 49, so county, hand me my $200 zoning clearance," there wasn't a lot we could do about it. So, this is really to get at that issue.
I'm really glad for that clarification.
Commissioner Duquesne, if we're going to-
Yes? Moving on.
No, no, no. Just if we're going to ask a lot of questions that it sounds like we're going to have public testimony from, let's, okay? No, I know you have other questions, so.
I'll wait.
Okay.
May I just make a comment, not a question? This is Phase One. I share some of Commissioner Duquesne's concerns. I want to be certain that Phase One isn't setting standards that Phase Two can't do with, like this half-mile thing. If you're going to say it's a half-mile, and it's in Phase One, then when you get to the area plans, you're locked into that. Am I right? I'm sorry, no question. I was just-
No, no, no. This is that broad, general-
Okay. That's a valid question.
Thank you.
Yes, it would.
Okay.
It would lock in that particular standard. If you agree with the recommendations of the Ojai Valley MAC, which is to put in, except as maybe defined by an area plan, your commission can so recommend that to the board.
I'll wait on my, any further-
Any other questions of staff at this time? I'd like to open the public hearing. I have many cards that are marked both oppose and support, so I'm, right. And so, I'm just going to take them as I receive them. Maureen Smith? If you could state your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Maureen Smith, and I am the owner of Wheeler Hot Springs. And I do have, the address of the property is 16825 Maricopa Highway. I do have concerns over this, because my whole purpose in buying this property, and I've been working at it for two years, and I've spent a lot of money and a lot of my time doing it, is because I love this property, and I want to open it to the public again. It was owned, or actually, by default, owned by a company out of New York in a lawsuit, and was closed to the public. And so, I've spent the last two years of my life, basically, researching, writing checks, doing due diligence, and ultimately, purchasing the property. So, when I see something like this, I mean, it's a huge project to do just on its own. And when I see something like this, I just, it's a bit overwhelming, and I just feel like it's going to prohibit me further from getting this property open to the public again. And I, that's why I sent you guys this email, and I'm glad you have a copy of it. I don't want to belabor the point by going through all the things that concern me again, but I think I've outlined them fairly well. But basically, I've spent a lot of time doing this, and I'm concerned I'm not going to be able to continue doing what I'm doing based on some of the language and the changes within this suggested amendment.
Commissioner Duquesne.
So, what do you suggest instead?
Well, I'm not an expert on this kind of thing, and honestly-
Neither am I.
I had very little time to prepare for this. And that's sort of another thing. I received a notice on Memorial Day weekend, and I'm just a layperson. I tried to read as much as I could, understand as much as I could. I got Ken Marshall here to help me. He is much more knowledgeable in these areas than I am, and I've spent the past week just poring over this, trying to understand it. But I am fearful that this dream that I had of opening this property is just going to be squelched, because I don't have time to really understand it. And Ken has helped me immensely, and he could maybe elaborate on some of these issues more. The other thing that I am concerned about, too, is I received notification at a very late date. I happened to talk to one of my neighbors who said, "What?" Hearing. And then, I talked to another neighbor who also didn't receive notification, so I do have some concern over maybe the mailing distribution list might not be complete, because I think we'd have more people here today if more people had been notified, because I think they would share my concerns.
I think Ms. Rodriguez can speak to that, because I asked about that.
Yeah. There's a few things on notification, and it is in your staff report. And let me just look to see, there was an eighth-page ad, first in the paper. Sequel requires that you notify one of three ways, or two, or all three. One of them is a legal notification in a paper of general circulation for a zone amendment, a zoning amendment. It's an eighth-page ad. So, we put an eighth-page ad in the paper. Then, I believe in this instance, there is a-
I'm sorry, which paper was that running?
Let's see.
It was running this time?
There's the public notification and comments on page 13, which says, it was published in an eighth-page ad in the Ventura County Star. In addition, notices were sent to all owners of property being rezoned from SHP to the SRP overlay zone, 10 incorporated cities in Ventura County, the counties of Los Angeles and Kern, and additionally, all parties and entities that have an interest in the project shown on Exhibit Eight. And I think you can see on Exhibit Eight, it was a huge distribution. It was a very large distribution.
But I mean, I am concerned, because I talked to my neighbor immediately adjacent and immediately on the other side, and neither one of them-
And I'm also concerned. So, with that, we do keep the actual mailing labels, and if anything is returned to us, that's also part of the file. So, I'll be happy if we do take a break to take a look, to make sure that you were properly notified. And I also would like to spend some time talking to you, because you are in the SHP, not the SRP. So, as Bruce has alluded to, there's not much change for you. So, I think if I could spend a few minutes going over what you are already subject to and what you will be subject to, I think I can alleviate a lot of your fears. So, maybe we can do that at a break also.
Kind of counsel, do you have anything to add to noticing requirements?
None.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Duquesne, do you have any? Pat Baggerly?
Good morning. Chair Bartels and members of the Planning Commission. I'm Pat Baggerly, representing the Environmental Coalition of Ventura County. The proposed changes to the scenic resource protection policies were initiated by the Board of Supervisors to implement additional ridgeline protection policies in the Ojai Valley area plan, and strengthen ridgeline protection policies for Ventura Park's scenic overlay zone. Instead of focusing on what was directed by the Board of Supervisors, staff has proposed amendments to the adopted Ventura County general plan that will weaken the protection that is currently in place to protect the county's scenic resources. Word changes that can cause havoc with protection of our scenic resources are found in all three exhibits. For example, in Exhibit Two, by omitting the words "physical processes" and inserting vegetation, eliminates the protection that the term "physical processes" includes by definition, such as alteration to drainage courses, springs, rock out, croppings, and knolls. Another example of havoc occurs in Exhibit Two, as a result of changing the sentence, prevent significant degradation of the scenic resources, to prevent significant degradation of the scenic view or vista, which is more limited in application, because it speaks only to a view or vista, while scenic resources may include other things such as rock out crops, waterways, and historical structures. In Exhibit Three, the current general plan resource appendix inventory describes views from the foreground to five miles away. In contrast, the new suggested language only includes a provision that just the area within half a mile of an adopted county or state scenic highway be deemed a scenic resource area, and thus leaves the middle distance and background areas extending out three to five miles unprotected. In other words, what staff is recommending to you is a 90% reduction in eligible distance, and that in itself constitutes a significant impact, and a focused EIR should be prepared. The recommendation from the Environmental Coalition to fix the proposed changes that are not consistent with the board's original direction is found on page three of our letter, and it is as follows. Recommend to the Board of Supervisors that the proposed changes should be returned to the planning staff, and recommend the proposed changes not be considered exempt from environmental review, because they may cause significant impact to the existing and future scenic resources of Ventura County, and that a suitable environmental document should be prepared. The proposed policy changes should not be included, because they fail to protect the existing and future scenic resources that residents in the county's 10 cities depend on for a sense of identity and their maintenance of property values. Number three is PD permit provisions be required to include a future review date as part of approval, and that currently adopted policy and ordinance provisions in effect at the time shall be utilized during the review. In addition, a public hearing should be required for potentially impacted parties, such as cities and neighbors, so that their concerns can be taken into account. In conclusion, I have a letter I would like to submit to the clerk to hand you, and it has been opened and folded over to our recommended section, which the commissioners can see is highlighted. Thank you. And if you take a break, I would like a copy of Exhibit Ten. I didn't have one, and there wasn't one out in front, and I asked Bruce if there was anything extra, and he didn't hand me one, so I certainly appreciate a copy of it. Thank you.
Any questions?
So, you're submitting that letter, and, okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you. This is your original, your report, and thank you.
Going to destroy this last name. John Braesemoli? I apologize.
No apology necessary, Chairman Bartels. Chairman Bartels, members of the commission, I'm John Braesemoli, 3945 Thatcher Road in Ojai. And I applaud the hard work, diligence, and consideration that Mr. Morehouse and other members of the staff have brought to this endeavor. Also, by trade, I should mention that I am a historian, and historians talk a great deal about the law of unintended consequences that come from the best efforts at reform, and continually seem to bedevil us as we move forward, both as a society and perhaps also as a county. With that in mind, I would suggest that further forward movement proceed with some measure of caution. I don't begin to claim familiarity in any detail or with any expertise with the full body of statute that we're discussing. But in two particular instances, I'd like to raise possible suggestions where I think some improvement may be in order and may be possible. One of them has been heavily discussed already. This is the half-mile exemption. And it reads, in the non-coastal zoning ordinance revision, Section 809.4.1.2, "A plan development permit will not be required if the applicant can demonstrate that the proposed grading, structures, or vegetation removal will not be visible within one-half mile from any public road, trail, park, recreation area, preserve, or lake." I read that in full, because it reminds me, as I think it may remind others of you, of examples where, not within a half-mile, but further out, in that mid-range and that distant range, that 90% that Mrs. Baggerly referred to, you can see things that are visually affronts and visual blights, but that do not appear closer up. I'm thinking of specific instances in the Ojai Valley, and we're seeing them proliferating, and they're a great concern. I suspect the same thing is happening in the Canale Valley and in Ventura Park. Imagine a situation, for example, where a large house, let us say, let's be neutral in the language, is built which is not at all visible from Highway 33, but is visible from three, four, and five miles away. In every other one of these venues, except possibly Lake Casitas, imagine another situation where a house is built, it's out of sight, then the tree cover that has screened it is removed, and suddenly, you've got another substantial visual blight facing you. So, I truly feel that the half-mile situation, which was addressed by the MAC, but whose recommendation staff set aside, be reconsidered. And also, and I will keep within my five minutes, I'd like to mention another suggestion, and that is that all non-residential uses still require a CUP. And what this would get at would be the person who builds a wedding chapel, or who decides to convert his or her large and substantial visually impactful structure to a wedding chapel. Again, I'm thinking of a specific example. These are simply two suggestions, which suggest that cautions in order, so that the law of unintended consequences doesn't come to bear here upon us all in the county. Thank you.
Any questions?
You're a historian?
I taught American history, recent American history, at Cal State Northridge for 32 years.
I wish I would have taken one of your classes. You're an excellent speaker.
Thank you so very much.
Tom Webb? Or Janet?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm Janet Wolfe. I'm co-owner of a property, 22696 Maricopa Highway, Ojai, which is deemed the Pine Mountain Inn property. I'd like to make a few comments today, and I would reiterate, it's very difficult to look at seven different changes when you're not an expert, and try to figure out how it's going to affect your life, your property, your income, and so on. Due to the notice at the bottom of the letter stating that the issue is not brought to this meeting, may be brought up in legal proceedings in the future, I really think that's not a very sound comment to make, because no one knows for sure what this is going to bring forward. You may have everything you've got out here now, but something new in the future you can't speak to if it happens to come up. So, I would suggest that's not a very sound statement to make, to eliminate any future issues that may not be on the table today. I am very interested, and we are very interested, in this zone change, because we have spent $16,000 in one year trying to clarify a zone change that we were notified occurred some 12 years ago on our property. We still don't have a clearance tolling, or whatever that term is, so I'm concerned that I've got another overlay here that's going to happen, and I really need to know what's going on, because the county says they informed us in 1985, but we never got a letter. Our home address is not the address of the restaurant. The restaurant address would have somebody drop a note in a box that's sitting on the highway. I won't go into much detail there, but we're concerned, because we're already dealing with a big issue. We've not been able to reopen the restaurant at this point, because of the cloudiness of the zoning that we feel we never got informed. There appears to be, like I said, a minimum of seven different things, and it's hard for me to know which of those, and how much of those affect our specific property. So, I would like some help in that, in knowing which piece is going to affect us and how it's going to affect us. My big concern is what, well, we don't know what we can do now for sure, but what the old zone said we could do and what the new says we can or can't do. And I'm hearing here that it's not a big difference, but there are differences. So, it would be helpful for us as a property owner for 30-some years to know exactly which one's going to affect us and how. And there is some concern, the CEQA is not going to be required, because they're small, but if you put them all together as a package, it gets to be a rather large presentation. We very strongly feel that there should be grandfather clauses. We are dealing with that currently. Some of the things on that property have been there since 1938, and we're being told that there's been changes, that we should have had a permit. Well, there were no permits in 1938 that existed on that property. So, I'm concerned, again, things that already are there, if they're not adverse to the environment, and certainly, we don't feel our restaurant is- and certainly we don't feel our restaurant is, we've kept the muted colors, we've kept it very Old West, we've had people come through there when it was open from LAX, take pictures, send us pictures back from Germany, because this was the Old West they were looking for as a tourist. You know, just the old, old-fashioned things, farm implements hanging from the walls, all those kind of things. There's some concern from us about not having metal sheeting for roofs. We actually do have a metal sheeting for a roof. We've had it a number of years, and there's really three basic reasons. One is we get snow, and we need to be able to have snow fall off that roof and not crash it in, and last winter was a pure example of a bad winter, for California at least, in that region. The other is that fire, this is absolutely never going to catch fire from embers floating around. And the third is wind. We get winds up there through the North Pass as much as 60, 70 miles an hour. Now, if we have shingles or any other kind of outlay there, it's going to blow off. We're going to have chronic, we have a problem. With the kind of sheeting we've used, it's very secure. The other part is it is because we have a facade on the face of the building, you really don't see that from the road. If you walk behind there, you can see it's metal. So there's concern there that it would limit the traditional metal that you use for lots of reasons, and I understand the glare and all those things, too. We don't plan on expanding the restaurant structure. We do consider it a piece of history, and it was interesting to listen to this gentleman because it has been there, the restaurant has been on that site since 1938. There's a home behind it. Frank Felk actually built that home, and he's known for his poetry of the region, and he has a published book, Songs of the Sespe. So there is a lot of history in that environment, a lot of history in that site. We've been accused of a lot of violations through the years, and that usually comes up from the planning department, but as we've gone through them, we have no violations, basically. Some of the things that we were in violation for, like a chicken coop was there when they built the property in '38. It was never there since '76, when we took over the property, but we were fine because we had a chicken coop that didn't belong there. So there's a lot of concern. I don't want to get into another whole scenario that we're already dealing with on the property right now. And there was a question, although I understand the reasons for keeping a relative compatible look, and we have no issue with those things at all, but I would caution that covenant requirements create cookie-cutter building effects, and most of this area has far distances between things, so that's not going to be quite as apparent as it would in the track home, for instance. And then someone did mention the fire exemption for vegetation. We certainly don't remove trees. We try to keep control of them, and the trees have been planted there that are not indigenous so that there is some shade and some protection and some environment. I appreciate your listening to me. I will turn this in, and I just want to reiterate, we have concerns getting into another zone, which doesn't appear to be much of an impact, but we really would like to know exactly because we don't want to get back into the county with another zoning issue when we try to put a new roof on our place or a new facade on it. Thank you for your time.
Commissioner Dukas.
Mr. Smith, could you answer some of the concerns that she shared? She's looking for some help about how this applies to her property in particular.
We'll take the rest of the public comment.
That's fine.
Please be ready to, because I think we need to broaden that even beyond just this specific.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Joanne Maple Brady. I'm an attorney. I've been an attorney in the state for 25 years. I have counseled and represented several-
Excuse me, Ms. Brady, could you also state your address?
I'm sorry. My address is 1202 Loma Drive, number 104, Ojai, California. That's my residence address. I also own property in northern Ventura County. I'm not quite sure if it's within the jurisdiction of this ordinance proposal it may be. Regarding the proposal as it applies to ongoing residents and businesses in the northern quarter of this county, first of all, regarding notice, there is no mail service in that part of the county, none. If you want to receive mail, you have to get a post office box in the Ojai area, or like another business, the halfway station in Ventura County, Northern Park, their mailbox is in Maricopa, which is in Kern County. They have to drive a significant distance just to get their mail. There is no newspaper circulation in the northern part of the county, none at all. There aren't any newsstands. There is a newsstand in Ventacopa in Santa Barbara County, but they only sell the Santa Barbara newspress. If someone wants to buy a copy of the Star, they have to drive to Ojai, to the best of my knowledge. I have never seen the newspaper for sale in the northern part of Ventura County. There are quite a few residences there that you don't know about because they sit back from the road, not a half a mile, actually very close to the road. There are a number of businesses, the Wolf's Business, Wheeler Hot Springs, Bodie's Restaurant, the halfway station, all along Highway 33. I don't know if notice of this hearing was given to them. The halfway station was closed for a while because of illness. I personally drove a copy of your notice of hearing to the halfway station last Sunday. The station was closed. I don't know if they ever got your notice. Now, regarding, it's been a lot said about discretion, and I've appeared at several meetings of the planning department with Mr. Wolf, and it's my understanding that there is an agenda by the planning commission to eliminate all businesses on Highway 33 as they are an affront to the scenic resources. At a meeting with the members of the planning staff and a member of the building and safety department, I proposed this to my client in front of them, and there were no denials, just dead silence. It appears that some of the businesses have, couldn't meet the requirements of the county codes and ordinances after being repeatedly notified that they were in violation of certain ordinances or code sections. I consider myself to be a very good researcher. I went to the Ventura County Library, and I could not find any of these codes that they referred to. I had a meeting with a woman named Carol Aragon of the planning department, and I asked her if she could show me in her book where these codes were. She couldn't. Now, I had to go to the Board of Supervisors and ask them to print out for me the copies of the ordinances or copies of the code sections my client was accused of violating. That's the only way I got them. There's something wrong with this. You know, and I work in Santa Barbara County, my home is in Ventura County. My office is in Santa Barbara County. I can go into the county law library, and I can get the codes for the city of Santa Barbara and the county updated. Now, I don't understand why Ventura can't provide the same service, especially to people who receive notices and bills. This whole process is very expensive for them. My time is not cheap, especially when it comes to the exercise of discretion when you're dealing with ordinances that people have never seen, that their own lawyers have In regard to exercise of discretion, there are a number of businesses along Highway 33 which have been in existence for over 50 years, and now, all of a sudden, they're being confronted with a number of violations. There are, these businesses are the only, the lifeline of the county. There is no telephone service, there is no fire service except for the National Forest Service. There are no amenities. Your cell phone will not work for about a 40-square-mile area. If you don't believe me, go up there and try it. All you get is no service, everyone. People go to Mr. Wolf's restaurant when there's an accident. He can't call. He has to tell them, well, go to that mountain and go to that mountain. If you're lucky, you'll get out. These businesses are, as I said, they're kind of a lifeline for the entire area, and people stranded in the back, people who have accidents, people who are stranded in snowstorms. There has to be some exception for these ongoing businesses, especially when it comes to exercise of discretion. Rather than a grandfather clause, you might want to consider establishing different exceptions for these businesses because they are, they are in a unique situation. You can't enforce building standards that you can enforce in populated areas. A member of the planning department said the new ordinance will not affect structures. It doesn't deal with structures. However, the notice indicates that it's going to add criteria for the construction of new structures and reconstruction of existing structures. I believe this applies to commercial as well as housing in that area. The ordinance will affect property owners. The scenic resources are on property that are privately owned. Most of the scenic resources, as you see, are owned by the United States, well, actually, by the United States government. They own 42 percent of the entire state. So this board and the county has no discretion regarding the Forest Service, but they're trying to regulate the houses and businesses along some very narrow areas. Perhaps you can provide me with an answer to my question. Is the county of Ventura trying to eliminate the businesses along Highway 33 as a blight to the scenic resources? Thank you.
Questions?
I can answer your question.
Yeah, is there a hidden agenda to get rid of businesses?
No. The answer is absolutely not. There is no agenda to get rid of any businesses on 33. I think what you're talking about is businesses that are located in a zone where their non-conforming status is no longer, their period of amortization has expired. So this is what happened. In many cases in Ojai, the zoning changed, I think back in the early '80s, maybe '82, from whatever commercial status, and this is the same that happened with the Pine Mountain Inn. This is Bodie's, this is Bacolli's, this is several restaurants over there. These uses are no longer allowed in the open space zone. The county doesn't allow restaurants in the open space zone. So what we have done is to say there's a code section here. It's 8113-5.2.5. It's on page 252 of the Ventura County Non-Costal Zoning Ordinance. It is the request for a continuance of non-conformities beyond the period of amortization. I have asked for all four of these sites to apply for this. This is a very simple standard. Special circumstances, which you've already outlined, which I've outlined the same standards to say, perhaps it's the only phone around, perhaps there is issues where it's the only public facilities around. There are special circumstances that this very short code says. If you believe that you want to apply for this non-conforming status beyond the period of the amortization, then you need to make this application. Now, Bacolli's has made this application, Bodie's has made this application. We have asked the halfway station and the Pine Mountain Inn to apply for this very same thing. So there is no discussion at all to have any of the uses along Highway 33 be gone. It's, they're not appropriate in the zone anymore. The code allows you to apply for something, and we've suggested that you apply. Simple as that.
I do have another question, too. What is your area of law you practice?
I do a lot of real estate law.
Okay.
I don't have a, I'm not a certified specialist.
Okay. And then, how did you get the notice that you drove over to your neighbor?
My client emailed it to, I'm sorry, he faxed it to me. I copied it and delivered a copy to the front door of the halfway station.
Okay, so you're concerned about exceptions, and that you establish exceptions. You understand that there are, there is that mechanism to get that done?
Well, whether or not it will, that exception, I think, applied to the previous zoning. Will it apply to this one as well?
Could I have that answered, please? Yeah, it's simply the request for a continuance of non-conforming beyond the period of amortization. So when the zoning changed from commercial to open space, and then the county ordinance says that restaurants and commercial businesses are not allowed in the open space, and this was back in, I think, '82, so many, many years have gone by since that notification, and we have looked. They were appropriately notified. The notification is on the latest assessor's roll. That's who gets notified, whoever owns it, according, whoever gets the tax bill, they also get the notification of the zone change. So this is, it wouldn't be allowed in the zone that you're in now, and if it's SRP instead of SHP, scenic resources, instead of scenic highway, it still won't be allowed. So you would still need to apply for this request of continuance because the amortization period goes along with the square footages, and a lot of these, the square footages were narrow. So if the code changed in '82, maybe in '92, that was the end of it. So they were notified, but now it's time that we address them to say, if you want to continue, file the appropriate mechanism, or file for the appropriate zone change and general plan amendment to change it back to commercial, if you believe that that's the appropriate venue. But having them continue out there in this legal non-conforming status is not correct either.
Okay, well, that sounds, that sounds good. And before we get into a dialogue-
I was just going to make a comment. We have applied-
Okay, time out. Whoa, whoa, time out, time out.
All right.
This is, excuse me. Ding. Let's stop.
All right.
We have, the questions have been posed. It is a public hearing specific to the purview of our agenda. It sounds like there's another issue that is underlying this, and so I'd like to stop this dialogue. There, I have additional speaker cards. It's clear we will be taking a break. If there needs to be additional dialogue between planning staff and you and your representative, that's great.
It's just, it's just a question of order and how we take the minutes and everything, so it's all clear. There's no rushing you through here.
Commissioner Dukas?
And then one last, and then one last question I have regarding the appropriateness of the scenic resources that are owned by private property owners being subject to, is it, is it appropriate for the county to have standards imposed on private property owners for scenic resources that they own?
And I think, and if county council can be prepared to respond to the question, and it's not going away.
Thank you.
Thank you. April Hope? Thank you. April Hope?
Good morning, planning commissioners. My name is April Hope, and I own property located in Ojai Call to Will at 16816 Maricopa Highway. I am here today to tell you that I was told by an unofficial source that County of Ventura's Planning Division is proposing to rezone my property from SHP to SRP. I am totally shocked and in a state of disbelief that my property can't be rezoned without even notifying me the property owner. This is fundamentally wrong. I ask you today to either deny the zone change request outright or request a postponement until the planning department has the courtesy to notify the property owners and schedule meetings to discuss this pending zone change with all affected property owners.
Commissioner Dukas?
Do you receive the STAR in your area?
Yes, I do. But I did not receive a notice.
Any other questions? Okay. Clearly, there will be some dialogue between planning staff and Ms. Hope. Russ Baggerly.
Good morning, commissioners. Good morning. Chair Barcell, it's been a long time. Hi, Leo. This is a really important decision, even though you're only making a recommendation.
Russ, can you state your name and address?
Russ Baggerly, 119 South Poli, Ojai. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a really important decision. And if you're at all unsure about how scenic resources are going to fare in the future under this particular plan, there's, you need to take a second look at it. The issue of changing from a CUP to a PD, I want to discuss that just for a second with you. I know that planning staff is fearful or concerned about applying a conditional use permit to a single-family dwelling. The takings monster is out there, but it's never happened. It might, but you never know. If you did, if the planning staff ever did deny a CUP for a single-family dwelling, that doesn't necessarily mean that it's going to take away all economic use of the property. I don't think necessarily that the threat of a denial of a CUP is a bad thing. Let's talk about the Plan Development Permit for a second. It is a much lesser permit than a CUP. It is applied by right. That means it really, in a sense, cannot be denied. It's a very strange discretionary decision. They might deny it, but they won't because of the takings issue as well. So, what you're going to have before you is single-family dwellings or other projects coming before the Planning Division, and they're going to negotiate the conditions that are going to be applied to it. And it'll never be denied. So, you're going to have a lot of, you may have a lot of Plan Development Permits hitting the ridge lines. That's the importance of what is before you today. Because once the scenic resources in Ventura County that had been so guarded and so protected for so many years is gone, you'll never get them back. That's a public trust that we hope you are looking at very seriously. If you're not satisfied with it, maybe your recommendation should be to send it back to staff to sharpen their pencils. Thank you.
Question?
Just one, Mr. Baggerly. Are you speaking for us today as a resident citizen or as a representative of the Ojai Mac?
I'm only speaking to you as a citizen.
Thank you.
Thank you. In fact, I have many hats that are left at home.
Thank you. I'm certainly aware of that. What are your recommendations?
Well, I'll probably get in trouble for this. But if you're, if you're going to move forward with a PD permit, then on point of sale in the future, that PD should come back to the Planning Division for review to make sure that, that it remains consistent with the original conditions. I don't have, I don't have a problem with keeping the CUP in the SRP zone. But, as I said, if you have to go to the PD, at least bring it back at point of sale. And it happens frequently. Or it doesn't. And if it doesn't, if it never changes, that's fine. But you need to deal also with the accessory structures for that, a single-family dwelling. It's not just the one building. You could have a number of buildings on the ridge line. There are a lot of things about this that maybe we haven't looked at close enough. Thank you.
Commissioner Dukas?
Later, I would like county council to answer Mr. Baggerly's point about CUP versus PD and whether the reason why, you know, what, what he said about takings and also the, the limits on discretion with a PD versus a CUP. And whether there's something that can be done to just have residences have to go to the PD and anything else be CUP if that's a solution to this problem.
Later.
Okay. I have no additional speaker cards. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? All right. I would like to take a 10-minute break and come back and resume the hearing. Order of a public hearing is that we receive public testimony, and then, we'll have a staff response. We'll have that staff response, and then, the commission will enter into a dialogue to make sure that all of our questions have been put on the table and, to the degree possible, responded to, at which point, we'll render a decision. I can tell that county council is ready to respond. He's brought his library with him. There you go. Okay. Bruce?
I will start with some comments, responses, then to be followed by either additional comments by Ms. Rodriguez and council. So, first of all, there were statements made by Ms. Baggerly relative to language that may appear, that does appear in the current general plan and what's being proposed. We endeavor to take undefined, very vague language, and make it more specific so people knew what we were talking about. Terms like physical processes really doesn't mean anything, really. I think it is important, however, to understand the distinction that what we're proposing, what we're protecting is public views and vistas of landforms, areas that are scenic from a public context as opposed to from private property. We're not regulating land uses that may, for the visual enjoyment of individual property owners from their backyards. We are trying to protect public views and vistas. So, that's why the emphasis on the view from public roads, public parks, public trails, et cetera. There was a statement made that the current general plan allows scenic highways to go to five miles in terms of distance. That's not true. Actually, the scenic highway protection overlay zone for the Highway 33, which is our only scenic highway at this time, is one-half mile. There's some question, obviously, and your commissioner is going to have to deal with this. Issue is to whether or not you feel there should be a general exemption beyond one-half mile or whether an exception should be made in an area plan or the other possibility is to remove that exception altogether and simply allow the discretionary permit process to make those sorts of determinations. At the break, just to also mention with, there was at least three property owners that spoke today that have properties on Highway 33 at the break. Endeavor to point out that they are currently subject to the SHP standards and that the proposed standards are actually no, no further, do not impose additional restrictions on them that don't otherwise already exist today. And there are other issues beyond the SRP zone we will have to deal with in subsequent meetings with them to clarify the county's processes and procedures for dealing with non-conforming land uses. With regard to public notice, public notice was verified, it was sent to all the affected property owners. Although it may be true that individual property owners don't always pick up their mail because they have a PO, a box, we can't, and nor does the government code hold us responsible for that. Whether or not they receive a, the STAR, let alone a newspaper in the North Half, again, is not, is beyond our particular control. We're, we're providing notification through the legal requirements of the government code. And, and since more than 2,000 property owners were affected, a legal ad in the paper is quite sufficient under the government code. And we went further and actually provided individual notification for those property owners along Highway 33.
If I might just jump in at this point in time on that one point so we don't have separation of comments. Government Code Section 65090 and 65091 apply to this situation, and actual notice is not required. Only that notice be given in accordance to state law, which is reflected in the Non-C coastal Zoning Ordinance as well as other notice provisions in the general plan. And so, if that was followed in this case and it appears that it has been, that is the case, public notice was satisfactory from a legal standpoint.
Yes, Commissioner Dukas?
Even where there's no newspaper service?
That's not an exception in the state law.
And I'd like to just add to that, Commissioner Dukas, too, because I, I don't like to just meet the requirements of the state law. We really do like to go over and above noticing whenever possible. So, I did confirm with the owner of the wheel here that we did have her correct address. You know, we did show her the almost $1,000 ad that we placed in the paper. We do keep the ones that come back. There was only four that, that came back to us. She wasn't one of the four. We have a very large list, not just of organizations, but we actually try to find the title of the person to make sure that they would be the interest of the person, the actual name of the person, too, to really get an ordinance like this out as far spread as possible. So, I think, in light of our whole record here, we really did go over and above what the law requires. But there's some instances if, if, if people don't pick up their mail or we don't have, or the assessor's office doesn't have their correct address or they don't get a newspaper or don't get the internet. I mean, there's not a lot we can do besides posting a notice on each one of their doors. Or, or allowing, you know, there to be a continuance to allow that, that person to have the legal notice provided and get all the, you know, things sorted out. I think that's what we're doing here today is trying to sort it out with the folks that have come to see how it affects their property. And I believe that's what we tried to do at the break.
Continuing staff response?
The last point that I wanted to specifically deal with is the issue of a CUP versus a PD permit. I provided an explanation as part of my presentation early on. The reality is that even under the existing CUP, we've never denied a CUP for its adverse impacts or significant adverse impacts on visual resources. In all instances, the project was redesigned and mitigation measures were imposed. And that's the reality. The CUP is much more appropriate when we're talking about a use which may inherently be noxious or have adverse impacts on surrounding properties. Mining, landfills. Now, those are types of uses that are allowed in open space, but nonetheless are more industrial in nature and can have very profound effects. And so, those require a conditional use permit. They may not be permitted. But I would say that 99% of the time, what we're dealing with under SRP is a single-family home on an existing lot. And I will allow county council to elaborate further in terms of what constitutes reasonable use of property and our regulatory control and span of authority.
On that point, Commissioner Dukas, you asked a question of the comparison between a CUP and a Plan Development Permit or a Plan Unit Development Permit. Those are several different names. And whether or not one had more discretion over the other in terms of the government's ability to regulate the land use. I would just echo Mr. Smith's comments and that they are appropriate. And I believe he's answered to a great extent from the planning standpoint. Legally speaking, I looked at whether or not the Plan Development Concept itself provides less or more legal conditions or has less or more legal authority. And, and the case law on this is very clear that the Plan Development Concept has been approved under several different California cases. And I'm not going to go through all of them. But the whole concept here is that Plan Unit Developments or Plan Development Zoning has been usually attacked on two grounds. One, that the concept violated the uniformity requirement in the government code 65852, and that if it's not uniform, then therefore, Plan Development has somehow violated state law. That has not been found to be the case under Supreme Court, State Supreme Court law. And that argument against Plan Development permits has been rejected. The second is that Plan Unit Development Ordinances or overlay zones unlawfully delegate legislative power to the planning agency in a matter involving density or type of use or things of that nature. That also has been stricken down so long as there are guidelines for what the Plan Development is. And in this case, it appears that that is the case with a scenic resource plan overlay. That would be sufficient as well. So, under both of those major arguments in a number of cases, Plan Development has been upheld as being a proper use of authority in this type of case. And it is not an unlawful delegation of authority down to the planning agency as opposed to some other form of project review, discretionary or otherwise.
Commissioner Dukas?
Well, so, I think the concern there, the concern is that there will be less opportunity for review with the DP instead of a CUP. And if, if we could just have it only apply to other uses other than the, you know, building a house, if that was possible, that was my, that was my question.
Specifically, you wanted to know whether a Plan Development Permit could be restricted to a certain type of use?
For example, a house.
But not for?
Anything else.
I'm trying to understand what you're asking. Is, is, you want the overlay zone, the scenic resource protection, to only apply to houses but not to anything else?
No, the, the type of approval that it would need to get a DP versus a CUP.
A DP?
A development permit versus a-
A Plan Unit Development Permit?
Yeah.
Okay. So, you would like to make a, well, I'm trying to understand the question again. Is it to make a distinction between uses and the different types of discretionary permit review?
Yes, is that possible?
I guess theoretically it's possible. I don't know how it would be structured.
Commissioner Dukas, I'm not, I'm not exactly following what you're, what you're asking for either because both of the permits are discretionary. Both of them require a public hearing. Both of them require to meet all the approval standards and all of the findings in Section 8111211. They all have to meet them. They both have a public hearing. And the difference in a lot of instances is conditional use permits have time associated with them. So, when we say, well, we're going to allow you to have a mining operation, but we're going to check in 10 years and we're going to see- going to check in 10 years and we're going to see how the community is built up around it and we're going to look to see if you can still meet the findings. That, that you can't do with a single-family house. You allowed somebody to build a single-family house. You can't come back in 10 years and say, well, now you have to take it down. It's a difficult permit for us.
Right.
But I did want to also address the issue of Mr. Baggerly about the sale of the property, that we should reevaluate this when we sell the property. There's also a section in the ordinance that requires recording of notice of responsibilities. And that we also do for all discretionary permits in the non-coastal area that's saying, if you buy this house, you will find on your title a notice of discretionary permit. That means that you've bought this home and right now it would say that you could have, you know, this, this kind of grading allowed. But in the future, it would say, well, you bought this home, you agreed to keep it in these muted colors, you agreed not to, to build it over 22 feet, or, you know, all of these standards that would go along with the planned development permit would now be recorded as a notice of future responsibility. So I think that that gets at what Mr. Baggerly was looking at and it still gets at that through a PD permit.
And then, and then there'd be enforcement of that in case there was a complaint that they weren't following through?
Yes.
And that would be the review that Mr. Baggerly was requesting?
Correct.
Right.
And in fact, with the now adoption of civil administrative penalties, that makes the enforcement actually much more aggressive than it has been in the past. And I think Plan Director would agree that our success rate has gone up appreciably as a result. Also to mention with regard to a planned development permit, CUP is given a period of time and after which you have no rights to continue. And, and we're not talking about just single-family dwellings. We're talking about agricultural barns, structures that are otherwise permitted by right. And we just think that we, when we originally drafted these provisions, we chose the wrong permit, quite honestly. And we, it should have, and we've known this for years. And now's our opportunity to correct that, is that should have been a PD permit really from the get-go. It just really doesn't fit into the framework of a CUP.
Can I follow up before we leave this, this string? If I have an existing PD permit, is that, there is within our code the ability to come in and ask for a modification, a revocation? I can come in and say, I want it to go away. I, I have two questions.
For grounds, yes, that's correct. A revocation or a modification would have to have findings of fact associated with. Typically, however, except in the most egregious cases, typically what has happened is it's been an old permit that didn't have adequate conditions and there was a need to establish up-to-date conditions on that permit. In a few instances, we've had aggrieved operators that flat-out, we had to simply revoke the CUP on those types of permits.
Right, I'm, I'm talking about planned development permit.
Right, there's a section, section in the code, it's 811162. It's modification, suspension, and revocation for cause. And it starts out, it says, "Any permit, any permit or variance herefore or hereafter granted may be modified or revoked, or its use suspended by the same decision-making authority and procedure which would normally approve the permit or variance under this chapter." And then it goes through to say, why? Why would we begin to do it? That the terms or the conditions of the permit had not been complied with, for instance.
I'd just like to add on top of what Bruce and Kim have already pointed out, the planned unit development or the planned development permit can have all of these restrictions applied to it, just as if it was in a particular zone. And it all depends on what the ordinance says and what those restrictions are. So in the planned development sense, there is no lack of restriction that the government agency can apply to a PD permit. And I think the main difference, as Kim and Bruce have pointed out, is the time difference. And the reason for the time difference is for those types of uses where there is going to be a deleterious impact on the local environment or on surrounding uses and therefore it needs a stricter control. But in this case, if a planned development area or the scenic resource plan does have those restrictions about what can and cannot go into place, that acts like a zoning restriction of classification in and of itself by calling it a PD permit. So PD permits have a dual nature. One, it's the type of development, but it's also a zoning classification on top of that as well. And in this case, that zoning classification is defined by the scenic resource protections.
Commissioner Dukas.
What about the other points that were raised in the Environmental Coalition's letters with regard to the difference between degrading and destroying a scenic vista and degrading and destroying resources?
Well, I turn it into a question, what is the difference? I, I don't think there is a substantive difference.
Well, one is that, one is that, I would say that the difference is, one is how that vista is perceived and, you know, what is actually occurring on the ground. I mean, if I am within that half mile and I'm blocked and I can't see it from the, from the half-mile rule, then it's, it might as well have not occurred.
Correct.
But if it, if it's modification to that resource, then, then it's, it's there whether I see it or not.
It's sort of the argument of?
That's the difference.
Did, did a gunshot happen in the forest if no one was around to hear it? It's the same sort of, of issue. If no one can see it from a public vista or venue or location, the county has said, "We are not in the business of regulating scenic views and vistas from people's private property." That has not been and that was not our intent. Our intent has always been to, for public views and vistas which are defined from public rights of way or public's property. That's the, that's clarifying language. That's no different than how we've viewed it.
I think that goes off from the original intent and, and this is a, a matter of disagreement rather than a difference in, in facts and how we see things and language and stuff. I think it's fundamentally different than what the intent of this was.
And just to bring us back to the purview of this commission, it is our job to make finding on both of those. So in the course of the dialogue, how we frame motions and how we make findings is going to have to clearly respond to both of those issues. Commissioner Molitor? Or, I'm sorry, Commissioner Dukas. Okay. Commissioner Molitor.
Chair, Chair Bartels, there was also a question that Commissioner Dukas asked of me. It was a question of authority. The authority of a county to regulate?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
There you go. Commissioner Dukas asked a question of me prior to the break and it was a question of authority. It's a question that I wrote down and correct me if I'm wrong in jotting down your comments, but the authority of the county to regulate private property owner views in the SRP?
No, I was wondering, based on?
Do you have a copy of that?
It wasn't. I think it was Joanne Brady who said it, but I, I might be wrong, that, that the county really had no right to regulate these resources or, or vistas that might be viewed by others on public property. That the county had no right to regulate those scenic resources because they were owned by private, private property owners. The resources were.
The resources, you mean?
The resources that were protected before with, with the language, instead of scenic vista, that scenic resources. I think her point was, those are mine. Those are private property owners.
The resource itself?
Right, the resource itself.
May I finish my question, please? Because there was a fundamental misunderstanding that those resources that would cause the vista from somebody who was viewing it from someplace else, that those were on private property and what legitimate authority does the county have over those? That was my question.
If I might use an example, if I own 40 acres that was adjacent to Highway 33 and that 40 acres was populated by many tall pine trees and the pine trees constitute a resource, I decide to go into the furniture-making business and cut down my pine trees. Do I have, does the county have the right to control the, what, what I do as a property owner of those resources? Is that the question?
That was her point that I wanted answered by the county, yeah.
Well, the county's jurisdiction in that sense could involve land use regulations. It could also include other types of laws and regulations that the county has, is responsible for, for carrying out, whether it be by state law or by local ordinance. So whether or not we, the county does not have a right or authority to regulate the use of resources that may or may not constitute a quote-unquote scenic resource or vista. Covers many different areas of law, more, probably more than even just land use. But in, in the case that we're talking about here, is the general plan making a point that scenic vistas from a public vantage point are, is something that the general plan is concerned about, that the county's concerned about, and by virtue of the general plan, area plans, and then the zoning ordinances that implement the general plan policies, it does have that authority to do that.
Thanks for that clarification.
Commissioner Molitor?
I think that I will wait till we have our, till everything's finished. Bruce, are you finished with your comments? Okay. I think I'll wait till we discuss.
I just had one final comment that Mrs. Baggerly made about the county staff perhaps misinterpreting what the board said. And I, I don't believe that's true because the board members asked us specifically what they wanted. And then we had specific follow-up meetings with those board members and their staff to say, this is the direction that we're heading, this is where we're going, is this what you had in mind? So those conversations were had. So I don't believe we have misinterpreted what they were after.
Chair Bartels, just one quick question through the chair to Commissioner Dukas. I'm trying to understand the private view versus the public view issue.
I, I think that was clarified by Mr. Smith, that we're talking about what the county has jurisdiction over and, which is the scenic highways and, and, I'm sorry, the, the views from the scenic highways, the views that could be seen by, from trails and lakes and, and the list goes on. That, that was different than what the point was made by the speaker about whether or not the county had a legitimate regulatory authority over those resources. So I just wanted, there's very different points of view in this room and I want to make sure that they're all heard and understood and that we, like you said, come to a balance.
Thank you.
Commissioner Rodriguez? Okay. Is there anything else from staff for the good of the cause? Deliberation. If I can frame this just a little bit, what we have before us is a Board of Supervisors' initiated attempt at reforming what has been identified as a problem. And so as with all board-initiated attempts, this is a very political animal. And this is a very diverse county. And the people who testified today represent a unique section or unique sections of the county. We did not hear testimony from other areas that are affected by this Phase 1 piece. So as we deliberate and as Commissioner Dukas has said, I believe we need to focus our deliberation specific to what we have before us and craft recommendations to the board, which is what we're doing, to bring the four of us as opinion and policy suggestors in this process back to the board. So given that sort of framework, if we can, Commissioner Molitor?
Thank you for that clarification. I feel the same way that the board has given instructions or direction to the planning department. I think they put it together in a good way and were the next intermediate step before it goes back to the board. I have some comments. One thing that concerns me is this half-mile and public and private view. How many people have to see it before it becomes public? If I'm standing in my backyard and I'm the only one within a half-mile that can see this issue, then it's, then it's, you know, it's my private view. But once you get beyond that half-mile, once you're up in places like the Conejo Valley or the Ojai Valley where you have areas from public highways and you can see them, that's affecting the scenic beauty. There may not be a trail within a half-mile from where someone wants to build something that's going to stick out up there. So I have concern about that. I just remember reading this week, I think, or seeing on television, Kevin Costner came to town and, as many of you know, the actor went to Buena High School for a while. And in his interview, he was saying how pleased he was to come back and be able to look and see the hills and that those hills were not completely taken over. The view that he's seen, I know that's the city of Antura, but still the concern was, I'm looking up and I'm seeing hills. I would like to see this. I would like to see us eliminate the exception on page 14. The second paragraph, that whole paragraph which says, "A planned development permit will be required if the applicant can demonstrate that the proposed grading structures of vegetation not be visible within a half-mile of any road, trail, or park." I'd like to just have that removed. I'd also like to have this wording put in. This, this is my recommendation that, that we discussed, having this wording put in about the CUPs and the PDs. And this was brought up by speakers. I would like to have wording that says, "Any non-residential use would require a CUP." Any non-residential use would require a CUP, not a PD. I think that's important because at least we're going to have a time involved on non-residential use. If you're building a house, as Bruce pointed out, you're not going to tear that house down later. Again, I think that, I don't like the half-mile and those are basically my concerns. Thank you.
Commissioner Dukas?
It's, it's my experience in, in Thousand Oaks and in Hidden Valley and we don't have people who are, who are here today because there is no math that says where this even applies, but there is a problem in our area. And that is that county standards are not consistent with Thousand Oaks standards. And it sticks out like a sore thumb. And this doesn't, these sets of guidelines, I don't see them fixing the problem. So that's what I was getting to when I said, I think that the intent was not merely to make it more efficient and more clear, but it was also to alleviate the problems that we have in our area. You were saying before, all the, Mrs. Rodriguez was saying before, that all that the county could do was control the grading and, and that there was illegal grading going on and stuff. And so I appreciate that there's a step in the direction of getting to solving the problem, but I'm not sure that this is it and I'm just not expert enough to know what is. That's how, that's why we rely on, on you and then you come back to us and we go, yeah, yeah, that, that does it. But for me, right now, I'm going, wait a minute, this just doesn't do it. And Thousand Oaks is so different, so different from the area here. So it's like, I was, I told a joke about a bad-fitting suit. And I won't tell it here.
I don't know. I think it should go on the public record.
It's, it's just that, that we're trying to come up with standards that, that are fair and are clear, but the- clear, but they don't fit for these areas. You were saying that, Mr. Smith was saying that we could, in the next phase, decide where these things were appropriate. And I guess I'm just not there. I just don't see that the standards that would need to be applied in Thousand Oaks would be vastly different than the ones that need to be, that would protect resources in the northern county. So I'm not sure how to fix that. But right now, my inclination is to vote against this and try to, try to get something that would alleviate what caused the thing to come forward in the first place.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
I also have, microphone. Yes, I also have some issues and concerns about this half-mile benchmark that's been set as the baseline, because there are issues beyond that distance that, or excuse me, within that distance, obviously, where things will not be seen, but yet people beyond that and you see it, something is pretty, I'll call it unpleasant to the sight and impacts that particular environment. And I don't know if this is, I think in listening to Mr. Smith, this appears to be a standard statewide, industry-wide definition that we're dealing with, and I don't know how to address that or whether by, as a policy, the Board makes a policy decision to go beyond that, and maybe that should be part of our recommendation. I always have a concern when we get into discretionary interpretation versus strict standards that are clear and black and white, and there is no question about whether there's compliance or not compliance, because as staff changes, as days go by, and the same staff member looks at something a second time or months later, the interpretation has a tendency to change. Living in an uncorporated area of the county, the West County, and getting the opportunity to view a variety of discretionary decisions that are made by county staff as an enforcement of issues as it relates to constructions, sometimes I wonder where people bought their coffee the day they made that decision, because there are some real, some real issues that should never have occurred. I'm still not comfortable, I'm still not comfortable with the overall text. From where I sit, it seems like there's, in an effort to smooth over those restrictions, there's an effort to generalize the text, to move toward that discretion of interpretation. Question was raised, or suggestion was made by an exhibit we received from the Mariposa Coalition regarding the proposed changes to policy 1.7.2 (3), and the text of that deleting the word "physical processes" and inserting the word "vegetation." Vegetation, to me, is something green that grows. Physical process certainly is subject to interpretation, but vegetation, I don't see as impacting alteration to a wash or alteration to a slope that has no vegetation on it. And so whereas physical processes may be something, something that is not specific in black and white, it does provide a broader coverage that would eliminate those abuses or potential abuses. Because from a practical standpoint, if there's a way to, to, if there's, and I realize we can't restrict, control, and lock everything down today, because tomorrow or the next day, something's going to come up that's going to show us that we missed something. But the reality is, if there is a way to get around something, someone will find a way to do it, and whether it's putting a pad up and not doing anything with it, selling the property, and the next guy comes in and says, you know, hey, I didn't do that pad, I'm going up, you know, 30 feet, or whatever the issue might be, it almost seems like it still needs a little bit more work. That's where I'm coming from. Thank you.
I'm looking at page 10 of the staff report and the paragraph on board direction, and what I heard at the very beginning of the staff presentation was that there were two issues. The first issue was that the legislative authority that exists within the current overlays has some problems. That's number one. Number two is that specific to areas within the county, there are some major tweaks that are going to be required, and Thousand Oaks is specifically brought up, Maricopa Highway is specifically mentioned at the bottom of the page. Andy Gustafson comes to mind, planning is sort of an organized retreat. I think planning also has to be responsive, and I think what we are trying to do here is acknowledge that the fix is a process. The fix is not forever. And so when we talk about scenic protection overlay, part of what I am hearing is that we are making a decision to freeze time and say, there's the vista, and it will always be that way, when in reality, for me, if you told me that my children would be 10, 8, and 6, 10 years ago, I would have laughed, because I didn't think I would have kids at that point. So let's be careful about how we cast this. I agree, if you spend any time in Oregon, driving down state highways, they're beautiful. 200 yards off the road and then the clearcutting begins, and you see it when you fly over the state. It is not my desire for Ventura County to have that kind of scenic protection overlay. That is the extreme of that national standard of a half-mile. So I have the same concern. The other thing is that when people begin to intensify use in rural areas or up the sides of hills, where you, where your personal property becomes public in nature, everyone wants to tell you what color your drape should be, the color of your couch, and being a farmer, that happens neighbor to neighbor all the time. So in the course of attempting to craft this, I don't have a problem as long as we are clear that Phase One is only Phase One. And I agree with the Commission that there are some specific tweaks. I believe that we should recommend to the Board that area plans, or there are areas within this view shed that don't have area plans. And I think that one of our recommendations, I'm hearing, that I would submit to the Commission, one of our recommendations needs to be that the areas that are special in nature, and that planning staff's going to have to work with the Board, because we're recommending to the Board what that means, Maricopa Highway certainly comes to mind, better get hashed out in Phase Two. The other thing is that this prescription against material type, if I live in an area which has a wind requirement or a specific building requirement because of inclement weather, and we adopt a view shed matrix that's in conflict with that as Phase One, we are creating a problem, we're not eliminating a problem. So, and I like steel roofs, I think they can be glared and all that stuff. What the building type is, is not important. The final thing is that, I read Tom Berg's report, and in the midst of what we are attempting to do, we have Berg saying very clearly what Commissioner Rodriguez just said, which is, we've got lots of processes that don't coordinate very well, and we have applicants come in here all the time. Everyone's heart is in the right place to coordinate those processes. So it would be my recommendation to the Commission that we adopt the recommended actions with some very specific additional findings. One of the findings would be that we recommend that in public testimony, conflicts between existing areas, not specifically with area plans, may be in conflict with what we're trying to do here, and that planning staff bring that to the Board and get specific direction from the Board relative to that. Let me...
I don't know what you meant.
Well, you've got Thousand Oaks, you've got TO, where we've got development going up the hills in the county, where, and Mr. Smith said it in the staff report, staff, or county policy has not kept track with Thousand Oaks' policy. Some of that development may or may not have occurred within the TO area of influence, and we've got two processes that the county policy says, we use TO as the basis, and we're not doing it. This overlay needs to acknowledge TO's area of influence. And I believe that was alluded to, or specifically called out on page 11. So that's, that would be one specific recommendation. The second specific recommendation is, I have really, CUP and PDs, we talk a lot about compliance and we talk, zoning has gone from being, it's always adversarial, but it's gotten to the point where the processes are adversarial. And so if I, as an applicant, walk in, not only am I into an adversarial process, but what I'm trying to work through is adversarial with itself. That's what Berg said. Okay? And so by adoption of this apparently simple overlay, that's just exposing that to a high degree, and that's a policy issue. And I believe that the Board has made specific direction about Berg's report, and that there will be, there is a process that is flowing from that, which affects all of these processes. So in support of the Board of Supervisors, quite frankly, I want to do what we're supposed to do, which is to hear the technical aspect, to take public testimony, and to make a recommendation to the Board. And I think that the public who participated illuminated the adversarial nature of the special districts. Personally, I don't believe that having a CUP requirement, if I have a PD and it's an appealable process, so any decision is an appealable process, and so there's always access to appeal, and just whining is not an appeal. So that's where, I'm struggling with the same thing, and quite frankly, I don't want to frame the motion, but if I need to, I'll frame a motion.
May I start with a motion, and then you can frame in what your concerns are. I would like to move that we approve the overall recommendations with the following exceptions. Number one, that we eliminate the permit exemption, Section 8.109-4.1.2, that paragraph on page 14, "A planned development permit will not be required if the applicant can demonstrate that the proposed grading structures or vegetation will not be visible within one half-mile from any public road trail or park." And the second part of my, that I'd like to include before I turn to you, Chair, there's three years, and the second part again is this, I like a timing on a non-residential CUP. So I'm recommending that in the wording, we put that any non-residential use would require a CUP, not a PD permit. Those are two of the things I'm liking in my motion. Now I'm open to any others additions to that motion.
Okay. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Can I just clarify on that, that motion? Would that mean, Commissioner Molotar, that if somebody built a single-family home and a detached accessory garage, that one would be subject to a PD and the garage would be subject to a conditional use permit?
No, obviously not, because that's, that's part of the residence. Even though it's a separate building, it's part of the residence.
Okay, because people build very large accessory structures and put their garage in there quite frequently. So you can have a 1,500-square-foot house and a 6,000-square-foot garage. So, I mean, we would need to be clear that what you would be wanting by that, because typically, things that you may be wanting to get at that are accessory to a single-family home, like accessory structures, barns, crowns, garages, things like that, are, would be covered under a PD. Things that would be covered under a CUP would be not accessory to the house.
Don't you think the planning department would have the discretion at this point to look at this and say, you know, what are you trying to do? This isn't residential if you're going to put all this in and deny it?
Yeah, except we get these permits all the time, that's, you know, I want to build my home, and I want to build my artist studio, which is my accessory structure to my single-family home, and they're usually all covered under the same permit. That's a pretty typical permit in the county. So if you're saying one would be subject to a PD permit that wouldn't have a time limit, yet we would track your accessory structure, your artist studio, and maybe we're going to look at that artist studio every 10 years to see if it's still compatible with the neighborhood, I think that would be difficult for us.
But you're asking, you're recommending that we have PD permits generally to solve these issues?
Only because I would agree with Bruce, that it was the wrong, that a CUP was the wrong mechanism to begin with. And that's just my take on it. I think we get the exact same from both, the exact same findings, the exact same environmental review, the exact same appeal process, the exact same hearing, it's just this time limit that we put on either residential uses or accessory structures to residential uses, which I struggle with.
Again, I see if it's a, if it's a residential, now you're right, they could put a residential and then build a big, but then it's not, it's not solely residential anymore. If you're going to build a big barn there and you're going to run a business out of your barn, that's not residential.
It's not, a lot of the times, it's not a business out of their barn, and it depends. You have a residential, and then there's all sorts of things in the matrix that's listed under accessory to residential uses. There's a lot of things that are accessory to residential uses. But say if you have a 40-acre ag, ag land, and you build a, you build your house, and you build four farmworker dwellings, and then you build your second dwelling, and you build your barn, and you build your garage, that's still, in our opinion, all secondary to the primary use, which is a single-family residence. You can then also build structures that are primary to the ag-related uses on it. So, and we track those two things separately for lot coverage.
I think you're giving me a good argument of not having PDs for any of these. I mean, you're kind of telling me that, no, it's going to be distorted if we issue PDs. So don't issue PDs, just do CUPs for everything. That's where we are, but that's not where you want to be, and that doesn't make it easy for you, but we have to work out something in between there. But you're arguing that PDs or CUPs can have all these exceptions, then just have CUPs.
I think I might have misspoke, that's not what I was arguing. I was arguing the fact that if you intend for the planning department to go back to these single-family homes and their accessory uses, and to, you know, have some sort of authority over these uses to say, well, now we want to look, it's 10 years, now we want to look, we want to look at the land use compatibility, and you may have to deconstruct your garage, that would be different. You know, that would be putting the timeline on it, which is, which is what's of interest to me. Whether we call it a PD or a CUP, they still get the same. Whether we call it a PD or a CUP, they still get the same findings. They still get the same hearing. So it's just the timing of it that-
What about Mr. Baggarly's recommendation that we have with the PD, whenever the property changes or something, it comes up for review?
That does happen already, because you get that notice in your title report. So if you had a PD or a CUP, because it's any sort of entitlement, the law requires, the ordinance requires, that the county record a notice of land use entitlement, it's called, on your property. So that would mean the county would say, we gave this particular person a conditional use permit to grade on their property. Or we gave this particular person a CUP for a landfill. So the notice for the land use entitlement is already in the ordinance.
Okay, I have received a request from Commissioner Adukas that we reopen the public hearing. Understand, just, we moved to, we did move to commission, and though I may not have formally, that formally closes the hearing in terms of our process.
And do we need to table that?
We have a motion and a second. So before we do anything, we have a motion and a second, that which precludes any more dialogue from the audience at this point. If the motion is withdrawn and the second, but let the commission finish its dialogue, please.
My motion, and the two things that I would like to see in it, is an open motion for any other member to not just vote on that particular motion, especially Chair has some concerns that maybe can be amended to my motion.
Appreciating that, but also having some passing work with Robert's rules and how we do things. When we have a motion and a second on the table, I don't have a problem with a motion per se. I am concerned that we use CUPs and environmental review as a methodology, when in fact what we're talking about is active public land use, which requires dialogue about what the land use is. I have no problem with a PD. I know far too many people who live within the county who have acquired property, gotten one of these little notices, actually read their entire title, and then gone to the county and said, gee, I would like to do this. What is the process? And have in fact initiated a modification to their PD. It concerns me that we use CUPs for two reasons. First of all, the time restriction. And second of all, every time a CUP comes up, a helpful planning process or a helpful building and safety process changes potentially the use. For example, an ongoing ag-matrix use of horse camp. When we adopted the new matrix, you can't have a bunkhouse. So something that had had a completely legal bunkhouse for a very long period of time, all of a sudden can't have a bunkhouse anymore. It's a CUP. Viable ag use, we're back to the unintended consequences issue. So the helpful planning department got the conditional use permit re-permitted as an accessory structure. My concern here is that we are using scenic overlay protection to try to modify all of our competing processes. And so, and quite frankly, I believe that our job is to support the supervisors, to hand this back to them with the public comment that we have to say, okay, phase one is, and I'm sorry, I love this joke. Guy walks in to buy a suit and-
I'm telling my joke.
And puts it on and says, well, this sleeve is too short, too long. And so, just, and the guy says, well, that's okay, just raise it up. And then this pant leg is too short, it's okay, well, just sort of, so the poor guy is walking down the street like this. And people say, oh, poor guy. Someone else says, yeah, but great tailor. You know, let's not take ourselves quite too seriously. We are attempting to preserve the scenic resource, which is important. We are also attempting to do a planning process, which means people are going to come in and try to do stuff. So we have a motion, we have a second for the purpose of discussion. For the purpose of discussion, I'd like to hear from the second. Microphone.
Much of my concern in listening to the comments, both from the audience and the commission here, as I sit here and think about my concerns, my comments, and the other comments appear that they might better be addressed in the secondary phase of what we're trying to do here. That said, I still have some concerns, but this issues of CUP and PD, and the comments about the residential, the residential application on the PD, I, quite honestly, I, in my mind, I visualize residential application and a picture of residential. I quite frankly, didn't consider the extension of that and the addendums to that that are allowed within that application process for outbuildings and the fact that they can far exceed the footprint of the original residence. And at once, that is, that a CUP wouldn't be the appropriate, the appropriate point of application for something like that. And that PD review and discretionary decision on that process, particularly in the area of concern, geographical area of concern we're talking about here, would be more appropriate for that type of process. So I would back away from that concern.
I also have some, I also have some comments and concerns about the whole process of public notification, but maybe we can discuss that separate aside from this hearing.
Chair Bartels, as long as we're still discussing this, may I make one other comment? The thing that concerns me is when you issue PDs in these scenic zones to non-residential, you're giving them a lifetime use. Am I wrong in assuming that there's no timeline? The difference between the two seems to be the timeline on the CUP, but no timeline on the PD. So my concern is if we issue PDs for non-residential, we're giving them carte blanche to go on forever. I would like something that they have to come in, I'd like a timeline on any non-residential use in these scenic areas. That's basically where I'm coming from.
I understand. I also, I think we are entering the adversarial side of the process when in fact, Planning Director was very clear that if a PD comes into conflict, revocation is certainly possible. And I know that in Piru specifically, we have a whole raft of residential uses that have been called into questions because the houses are substandard. So, and there are active enforcements going on. Same thing happens in Ario. So I'm not, I'm not concerned about enforcement of a non-compatible use if it has somebody exercised enough to enter the process. My concern is, once you unleash the process, it grinds and grinds and grinds and grinds, and it destroys people. And I don't want our planning processes, which are supposed to build community, to be so adversarial that they become so destructive, especially when we talk about scenic overlay. And if I have a conditional use process come before me, then visual impact is part of the review of that process, if it's raised in the initial study. Okay? If it's categorically exempt, we're done. And at public hearing, you can talk about it. With a PD, all of that same review is possible if you have a neighbor adversarial issue, which we hear a lot of at this commission, where you have two PDs sitting side by side, and thus and so says, well, this set of behaviors is occurring. And the offended party says, or the offending party, apparently, has to then defend themselves within that process. And I've seen that process work. But when we get to visual overlay, I think, I think we're trying to apply the variance process countywide, apply the visual overlay process just like a variance process. And I think the other recommendation that was not specific to this motion, but was specific to the process, is that we recommend to the board that the scenic overlay acknowledge specific plans and acknowledge other plans or other special areas. Maricopa Highway jumps to mind, TO jumps to mind, Santa Clara Valley jumps to mind. Okay, so, and actually, in the coastal zone. I mean, the Coastal Commission has been very specific about how scenic overlay plays in. So again, I don't specifically have a problem with the motion as it is currently crafted, because I also believe that the direction from the board was specific to phase two. And I don't know if this current piece will play out well in phase two. I see some potential minefields.
I've asked if the maker of the motion would please withdraw temporarily the motion so that we could hear from the public. I've noticed for about 40 minutes, someone in the back had something else to say. And it's been a number of years that we've allowed this flexibility. And so I'm asking the Chair's indulgence on this.
With the second or the motion?
I'll withdraw my second.
Okay. The motion now, understanding that by reopening the public hearing, anyone wishing to speak, misspeak. Do I have the acquiesce of the commission?
Thank you.
Mr. Baggarly.
Thank you. I don't mean to interrupt your process. I just, I was trying to be helpful.
Say your name, please.
My name is Russ Baggarly. I live at the same address I did, you know, two hours-
An hour?
I just wanted to clarify something for Commissioner Molitor, and that's that the PD permit has to deal with a development by right. It has to have a square box in the matrix that's, you know, so it's only those types of projects that would apply. Is that correct, Bruce? I mean, that's what it says in the definition of a PD permit. It has to be a development by right, a project that would be allowed by right.
Right, a PD permit applies to a use which otherwise, without these special regulations, would have been allowed by a ministerial permit.
Exactly.
The converse is also true, however. If a use required a conditional use permit, it still requires a conditional use permit.
Exactly.
Okay, and would still apply. And in fact, to address Chairman Bartels's concern, a CUP outside an SRP area can and is frequently reviewed for scenic resources already. And in fact, our policies in the countywide general plan that speak to that particular issue.
Just one last quick comment, and that's on the California Environmental Quality Act review. There is a categorical exemption at 15303 for single-family dwellings. So it wouldn't surprise me that if all these PDs come before the planning commission, they're going to be processed with a CE.
Actually, they couldn't be in this particular case, because the categorical exemption would say if it's otherwise, well, excuse me, in the context of this would be a discretionary permit, in this particular instance, the zone itself dictates you have to have very specific criteria and findings for visual resources. And that goes beyond a categorical exemption.
So would there be a negative declaration, then?
Typically, there are. That's usually the mechanism is the negative declaration, because we have to present for the public the thought process behind which we concluded there is or is not a significant impact of visual resources, which you wouldn't otherwise get to under a categorical exemption.
One other thing that Mr. Baggarly brought up and Mr. Rodriguez spoke to was the difference between vegetation and the physical processes and how that could cover things that didn't necessarily include vegetation. I was wondering if the makers of the motions would-
The motion's off the table at this point, so-
The one that was made before, that's the one I'm talking about. If that could, look at that again, that the rock-out croppings, the other things that could be instead of just vegetation that we could, if we don't like that physical processes, come up with some different language that would make it clear that we're not just talking about vegetation, but we're also talking about other things such as rock-out croppings, drainage, whatever they are.
I think you hit it on the head. You just say, "physical process," which may include topography, vegetation, or other characteristics unique to that landfill.
And-
See, that may suggest, if we cut out the word "process", because I don't know what "process" means in that context.
Taking it out.
The word "process," okay? And then let's concentrate on the term "physical attributes of the site."
Thank you.
I think that's what we're talking about. And if that needs clarification, that's good. But I don't know what "physical process" means. I mean, landslide, it, process notes that there's something ongoing that, and I don't mean in the context of a stream, because this is about the physical view of that as a physical attribute.
But do you see that vegetation is kind of excluding these other things? That, I'm thinking of Mount Barney. It's rocky, there's a little, you know, I'm thinking of different areas where there are rock-out croppings.
If I could look to the actual language that that dealt with, is policy? Yeah, it's in the-
I just don't think it's helpful to just have it say vegetation if it could have that more inclusive.
Could you call out the page, Bruce?
Yeah.
Because you're in the staff report.
Okay. Basically, the whole context, oh, I'm sorry, page 17 of your staff report, we're in the Proposed Amendments to the SRP Zone. Now, just so we understand, the lead-in paragraph talks about scenic resources, scenic resource areas which are depicted on the resources map shall be subject to these provisions in the standard set forth in the Non-Coastal Zoning Ordinance, which include, okay? And it starts off with a request for grading, structures, or vegetation removal. Okay? And then it also talks in terms of, perons to, removal or damaging of trees are regulated by the Tree Protection Ordinance. Then goes on to say, "All discretionary developments shall be cited and designed to-" to and prevent significant degradation of the scenic view or vista, minimize alteration to natural topography and vegetation." So when you talk about rock-out croppings, that is topography, and that would be included within that. Use native plants when you're doing your vegetative, revegetation plans. Avoid silhouetting structures on ridge tops. Use colors and materials that are designed to blend with the natural surroundings and minimize basically whiting that would be obtrusive to an otherwise rural area. So that's the context then. I don't understand the, I'm not seeing where the word "physical processes" currently occur in the ordinance. I don't think that exists in the ordinance. Oh, okay. I'm sorry, in the scenic highway areas. Okay, the language to which Ms. Baggerly was referring to was under the current provisions of the scenic highway area at the bottom of page 17?
Mm-hmm.
It's strikeout language?
Yes.
Okay. And it says minimize alteration to the natural topography and physical processes. Well, in essence, if you go up to number B above, minimize alteration to natural topography and vegetation. Natural topography is already still in there, so your rock-out croppings are in fact included. But we added vegetation, and we felt there was, we were very unclear as to what's the difference between physical processes and topography. I don't see the difference. And so we have always said, you know, natural topography includes rock-out croppings, et cetera, slope of land. And we were just simply adding to it vegetation, which is not included in that particular phrase now.
I just found the question I didn't answer, I didn't have answered before. Were the people who expressed concerns that this would somehow inhibit their either ongoing or historical uses of their land, were those questions asked and answered? Was there, were those problems that were brought up by, I think there were three different speakers?
I think what we agreed to is that we, this was not, we didn't have the time right now to deal with a larger issue, which was issues of continuation of non-conforming use. That is, that will be done later.
But as it related to these standards, were those questions, because we don't have that on our agenda at all, just as they relate to this, were those questions answered?
Yes. So our statement was is that compared to the standards they currently operate under, which are the SHP versus what's being proposed, there are no appreciable differences. They're subject to virtually the same standard.
I'm looking for reaction from anybody here since we have it so that we can have speakers come forward. Was there, I don't see any indication that someone wants to come forward. Okay, then. Well, maybe not.
Okay. I feel like I'm in a classroom. We have someone coming forward, and then Ms. Baggerly would like to speak. Please restate your name.
Janet Wolf. I still have concerns because of past history and current difficulties that I don't want to face the same thing with this zone change, even though we're being told it doesn't make a difference. The CUP, PD, all that is going to make a difference to those of us that don't have technically residential use. So I just want to make that clear. Thank you.
Ms. Baggerly.
I'm Pat Baggerly for the Environmental Coalition again. On page two of our letter, it wasn't just a rock-out cropping. Physical processes include drainage courses and strings and gnolls. So I don't think topography covers that, so I hope you can include it. Thanks.
Okay, yes. Please state your name.
I'm just really unsure to about the changing of the, you know, to the SHP to the SRP because I've been, I've had my property for five years, and I've still had trouble getting my permits through planning. I'm just fearful that if this change, that it's going to cause me another five years down the road or another, I mean, it's just, you know, they always assure us that, oh, you know, we'll take care of this problem. It just seems to always get something else thrown at us on our project. And I just, I just feel really uncomfortable with this, the zone change. I just don't feel, I don't know how much more I can say, but I just, I just really don't like the change at all. I mean, I just can't, I don't see the insurance that this will remain the same as a SHP to the SRP. Thank you.
I also need to make a disclosure because I spoke to her outside during the break, and she gave me information that we didn't all have, and that was her perception that she, her business was being threatened or stopped by county planning. That's what she told me.
Is there anyone else wishing to address the commission? All right, at this point, I would formally close the public hearing again.
In anticipation of a question, what about water bodies or that nature? Let's concede the point. It's a physical feature, so we can suggest wording that says "physical feature," including topography or...
Right. If we could come back now to deliberation, I would like to ask the maker of the motion if another motion could be crafted, or Commissioner Duquesne, would you like to take a shot at crafting another?
Well, I still think that we shouldn't omit "significant." I think that language is helpful, that I do understand that before it was impossible to enforce because of the volumetric things. I understand that. I still like the word. I like the, I like the, that there's going to be some judgment on whether something or not is significant.
For clarification, excuse me. Just to point out that in the ordinance, the first, we actually have retained the word "significant," and it's to prevent significant degradation of a scenic view or vista. So actually, the term "significant" is still there in slightly different word form, but it's essentially meaning, meant to be essentially the same thing.
But what's so interesting is there's such different points of view about what's significant. There's the, the point of view of the preservationist, and there's the point of view from someone who may or may not be doing some significant alteration of their property.
True.
So what I'm trying to do is make sure that that concern is still in here somehow, with that intent that we're not going to nickel and dime somebody for doing something that they've done since 1938. I don't know how that doesn't get protected somehow with this whole thing. I'm not sure it doesn't, but anyway, I'd like to, I still like that word in that part. And the other thing that causes concern for me is getting away from the CUP because I've seen these things grow. And although I am not on a lake, I don't live on Lake Sherwood, and I don't live at Lake Bard in the places that are affected in the Cano Valley, but these things occur, and these things grow, and these uses get far afield from a single-family dwelling, you know, a family home. So I like the CUP. I don't want it changed to DP at all. And the biggest problem I have is that half-mile, and I never knew that it was always part of it anyway. I'd like to, I'd like planning staff to look at that again. So I'm not inclined to support this. I'm not going to be the maker of the motion to deny it because I see that three people are ready to move ahead.
Commissioner Molitor?
I'm still going to make the motion that I made before, and I will open my motion to any amendments that Commissioner Duquesne or any other commissioner would like to make. And so do you want me to state my original motion?
Yes, please.
All right. My original motion was, number one, that we eliminate the second paragraph on page 14, which has to do with the planned development permit will not be required if the applicant can demonstrate that the proposed grading structures or vegetation removal will not be visible one half-mile from any public road, trail, park, recreation, or preserve or lake. I'd like that to be eliminated, and I'd also like, I still, and maybe we see a bit eye to eye about the CUP on this situation, I still would like to have, if, I don't like the idea that a non-residential use, that I could build a business or McDonald's up on the hill or something else, and then it would, it's, once it's approved, it's done. There's no further, yes, I know it can be appealed, but I'd like a time limit on non-residential development. So those are the two parts of my motion.
Can a person who's going to vote against it make an amendment to it?
I don't believe the motion has been seconded.
Yeah, so we can negotiate the motion.
Yes.
And just for a point of clarity through the chair, Commissioner Molitor's one exception or one of the exceptions to the recommended actions deals with the amended section 8109-4.1.2 of the non-coastal zoning ordinance, proposed to be retitled Required Permit, Planned Development Permits, the final paragraph in that section. Am I correct? It's more proper to cite to the code section than to the staff report.
That's fine.
Could you call out the, call out the page, please?
Page 39.
Thank you.
And in the middle of that page is the language that Commissioner Molitor was referring to as something he objects to. Just wanted to be clear that that is what the motion is.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
And then just from Robert's Rules, points of order, it has to be seconded, and then the motion to amend, and the motion to amend would be seconded, but you already know that.
Sure. And given the somewhat free flow of this dialogue, if the maker of the motion wants to continue to have the motion gestate, we can do that prior to requesting a second. So if Commissioner Duquesne, Commissioner Molitor is the maker of the motion, so if you want to negotiate that, you are not precluded from voting against the motion. He's the maker of the motion.
But we don't have a second yet.
It's okay. We're still crafting the motion. Let's not second a motion we haven't finished crafting.
Okay. You don't like my motion, but you want to amend it.
And I'm not sure, I'm not sure if this will fly, but I have a problem with that half-mile for the reasons that I've said before, and I would like it to not be a half-mile, but for staff to maybe, see, this all comes from voting no on this. What I'd like to see is a better sense of how far away something needs to be in order for there to be a significant visual impact, you know, a significant vista degradation. I find that it occurs greater than a half a mile. It might, it depends. It depends on where you are. So I'm not happy with that half-mile, and I'd like to have that looked at more closely to make sure that we have a better definition than a half-mile, and I'm not sure that three miles does it or any particular thing. It's just, half-miles doesn't do it for me. The other thing that, yeah, the visual clutter is much more impactful the further away you look at the whole thing. I mean, understanding that it's not from my backyard, that it's, that it's the public's The other thing was, where'd it go? The inclusion of "significant" in that, so that it's clear that the grading, the alteration to the land is significant, that you're not going to get dinged for being two inches over. And I think that, I think those were the two things, and the fact that I wanted it to be a CUP for non-residential, and that you couldn't have all of these other large structures that they say, "Oh, well, that's just part of the house," and they are not.
Okay, let me, let me clarify. On page 39 of the actual text, Commissioner Molitor's motion speaks specifically to striking that last paragraph, period, which takes the half-mile prescription out. It no longer exists. Okay, that's so, so that gets to Commissioner Duquesne's by...
Is nowhere else? I have to read it over and over again. Is nowhere else?
I don't believe that it, Bruce, I don't believe it's anywhere else specifically.
That is the only... Excuse me. That is the only location where that exemption applies is in the context of the ordinance. So by striking it, we would have to, on a case-by-case basis, review it for its visual effects from whatever distance is appropriate for what's being proposed and its location.
Right. So by having the ordinance go silent, we then create...
There's no exemption.
There is no exemption at that point.
That is correct.
Okay. So the motion currently takes that into account.
Okay. And then what about the reinclusion of "significant" in where it was going into grading, wherever that is now?
Well, actually, "significant" is still there on, or section, on page 39, section 8109-4.1.4 Development Standards. "All discretionary developments shall be cited and designed to prevent significant degradation of a scenic view or vista." And then we also talked about under item number two, minimize the alteration of natural topography, physical features, and vegetation.
I'm getting to Wheeler Hot Springs email regarding "significant" having to do with grading. They requested that significant grading, that you don't remove the word "significant." Is that, do you know this one? Wheeler Hot Springs owner concerns regarding proposed scenic resources.
Well, in part, their comment was, they wanted the flexibility to determine whether or not a PD permit was required or not, or a CUP was required or not. Part of their confusion, as it was later discovered, is that they didn't realize they had those same threshold criteria applied to them today already. And so they were concerned that this would add additional criteria to require discretionary permit that doesn't already exist today. That was the primary concern. Who assured them is that the SHP already requires those threshold criteria. Now, they have other questions regarding... requires those threshold criteria. Now, they have other questions regarding what can they do on siding and alterations, and those are specifics to their buildings, but they wouldn't be threshold criteria that we would be talking about under this code. So, and I understand, and then Pat Bagley talked about the issue of significance, and we retain the word significance, and you're absolutely correct. In a discretionary permit process, especially when we're dealing on issues of visual resources, it comes down to the decision-making body, be it the planning director, which is then, of course, appealable to the planning commission, which then in turn is appealable to the board. That decision-making body, in the end, determines after all the input, what's significant or not, or what's appropriate mitigation to avoid it. That's the purpose of the public process, to weigh those sorts of competing, because you're absolutely correct. The neighbor may say, I think this is atrocious, and the property owner says, everybody does. I mean, I think this is perfectly appropriate. So.
So, yeah, those competing, it's, like you said, adversarial, but that reasonable people can come to a determination on what is significant with regard to grading.
Sometimes.
Could I just, there's one other issue that just leaps out at me, and that is on page 38, and Commissioner Molotar, I think by where we are, this is section 8107-29.4.1, the motocross tracks. If those prescriptions, those are very clean. That list is very clean. It gets at the specifics of virtually every aspect of the unique character of this county at least. What happens if the minimum siding criteria, we just strike motocross tracks and facilities?
Well, this is.
I know it's specific, too.
Yeah. The only reason for amending this section, and this is, any further amendments to this section is beyond the legal notice and the ability to deal with the issue of motocross tracks. These are the standards that apply to motocross tracks only, and the only amendment we're doing is striking the reference to SHP, which would no longer exist. If you find that there is some opportunity or problem that you would like to address motocross tracks, that'll have to happen in a different context.
That's not what I'm saying.
Okay.
What I'm saying is, in the course of the public dialogue, and in the course of this hearing, we have identified specific areas within the county that, and you've been talking about phase two.
Mm-hmm.
That little list is phase two. So forget the motocross piece. If I'm doing something in a scenic overlay protection, a scenic resource protection area, then if I include that list, that goes straight to the heart of TO, that goes straight potentially to the heart of the OHI, that goes straight to the heart of other areas, in my mind, because it calls out those specific things which may have another impact. And maybe we can't do that today.
No, we couldn't. But let me try to at least phrase back to you what I thought I heard you say, is that in the context, let's say, within an area plan, is there a possibility to rewrite the ordinance to flat-out prohibit certain uses, period? It's just simply saying, you know, elsewhere in the county, it's maybe viewed from a case-by-case basis, but we should absolutely prohibit this type of use from any land designated SRP.
Okay, you're reading.
Is that why you're?
No, I, no, that's not what I'm saying.
Okay.
What I'm saying is that.
You're just hearing it.
No. You're reading the whole, you're supposed to magically reach in my brain and see which words I've.
Okay.
Okay. All I'm saying is that that section, the minimum siding criteria section, if you take away the prescription about motocross tracks and facilities and identify, and get rid of the shall not, that's not, but this list of A, B, C, D, these are the other overlays which may have an impact as special zones. And, right?
Correct.
Okay. This is the piece that I believe is missing in the overall, and it would be my recommendation to the maker of the motion, that our recommendation include that this language be included to identify those areas of conflict. And I'm not sure how to frame that, so it's a legal motion, and I turned to county council for that. But I'm not talking about the prescription against, I'm saying you've got A through H, listing of other impact overlays.
Yes.
That need to be, it's okay, Bruce, you're not tracking with me. I understand.
I'm, what is it that you envision that we could do in the context of scenic resource protection overlay zone to be more specific as to what is permitted or not permitted, under what circumstances? And I'm trying to glean from the particular example, what is it that we would do differently in this SRP zone, either countywide or under the context of an area plan? One possibility, I'm just going to throw it out there, is you could say, no, we want you to go back and look at the base zone uses that are allowed in this zone, and say, in this overlay zone, it's not permitted, that use, because that use inherently is in conflict. And I'm only talking about uses which otherwise would be a CUP or PD permit, and say, in this special locational context, it's not permitted. It's more restrictive than the base zone. That we did not do. That we did not look at the whole types of uses in our zoning ordinance matrix and go through and say which ones are inherently inconsistent or not. And that was left really to the issue of the individual discretionary permit to determine the conditions under which it may or may not be permitted. So.
So are you getting at, like, saying you're not going to have telecommunications antennas in these zones? We're going to have a prohibition on them? If your language were made a part of this?
Yes, that's a different approach. Not one that we specifically endeavor to undertake. It is at least theoretically possible. Or, I mean, excuse me, it is legally possible to craft or redraft the SRP zone to prohibit certain types of uses irrespective of the base zone. And I believe county council could perhaps elaborate or clarify on that point?
I was just going to tag along on what Bruce was saying, and I understood what, I think I understood what Chair Bartels wants. The concept that is encapsulated in 107-29.41 is a vehicle by which it would clarify for you what is and is not allowed when you get into the context of 8109.4.1.
Yes.
Which is scenic resource protection.
Yes.
So, and just using a GIS context, you know, you've got all these, you have a base layer, and then you have all these other layers laid on top, and then either by different color or by different line, then you know that universe of things that you can do in this area becomes smaller and smaller because you incorporate those other elements that you borrowed from 107-29.
Right.
That would be, in my mind, a change in the project that is before you, and that that would necessitate direction to go, for staff to go back and redo it with that concept in mind. I think Bruce clearly pointed out, that was a concept that they did not go down that road, and I have to believe that that was based upon comments that they received from the two supervisors who directed them in the first place to go to this area. But by virtue of what you've heard today, and the comments that you've made yourself, and what you understand to be the issues, that could be direction you want to give to staff. And basically, that's a different motion altogether, really, if you want to go down that road.
I have a real basic question. In that B, within the sphere of influence area of interest or planning area of an incorporated city, I'm looking at the maps of the view sheds that would be impacted. And in our district, the views from the Lake Sherwood area would have this scenic overlay protection. But the rest of Thousand Oaks that is impacted by county planning standards not being consistent with cities' planning standards have created, it looks junky. It just doesn't, it just doesn't look good. So, but I don't see any, but see, that was the problem, in my view, of what was supposed to be fixed by this. And I don't see it being fixed by this. Can you tell me how it is?
It is not being fixed by this.
Right.
That is phase two. We will be back to your commission with an amendment to the Thousand Oaks area plan. And in the interim, the majority of land, even though the maps don't appear today, the majority of land in the unincorporated area in the Thousand Oaks area of interest already has the SRP overlay zone. So to the extent that these amendments are effectuated now, building of structures would be captured under discretionary permit. They're not captured now. So this really sets the framework from which the more detailed planning that you talked about, specific to Thousand Oaks, would have to occur.
Well, thank you. I feel a lot better now because I looked at this and I thought, oh, my gosh, where did we go so wrong? This doesn't fix it at all. And people come up to me and say, well, what are you doing? And I say, I don't know. We had these conversations with the board members about a short fix. How can we get to the structures so they quit populating the hillsides until we can get to the area plans? And we proposed this two-phase approach to them. Kind of having a Roseanne, Roseanna Dan a moment. For one phase, rather quickly, and then the more complicated area plan phases would have to come later. But just, and so that was one thing, the two-phase approach. And the other thing that I just want to get some clarification on, because I can hear you guys keep coming back to this issue, is this word significant and significant grading. So what it says is, any request for significant grading, and the word significant has been striked to just say grading, and then the new ones are structures or vegetation removal. One, two, three, grading, structures, and vegetation removal. The reason why we don't say significant anymore is because we've created a threshold. And the threshold, back in exhibit seven, say, grading, whether it's significant or not, when we're going to look at it, is if it's over two feet in height, or if it's over 1,000 square feet. That's, so we don't need the word significant because that is the threshold.
Right.
Because if we debated over significant grading, we would debate with each and every property owner. This is the same. Right now, significant grading is 50 cubic yards of earth moving. So just taking the word out significant, we've set a threshold. Adding the word in structures, we've set a threshold. The threshold for new structures is discussed, you know, in exhibit seven. We've also set thresholds for vegetation. So they don't have to be debated anymore. That's the reason why the term was removed. If we still want to leave it in there, it probably makes no difference because we've already defined it.
Right.
But what I liked about significant and not having it quantifiable is that there could be just the thing that you don't want. See, that to me seems like you have the discretion to determine what is significant with, on a case-by-case basis, because what flies in northern Ventura County is not the same as a densely populated area like ours in our district.
Just wanted to tag along to what Kim was saying, that by quantifying and creating a threshold of significance that is objectively determined by numbers and by types of standards, you have a defensible significance level. By not having anything objectively applied to the word significance, you have opened the county up to charges of capriciousness and arbitrariness in its application of significance. So from a legal defensibility standpoint, I would have to agree with planning in their desire to objectify and put objective standards on there. Understanding your concerns about going on a case-by-case basis.
And what about flexibility, then? How is it that you accommodate some flexibility and some common sense?
Well, the flexibility, or the public debate as to what constitutes significance happens after you've passed the threshold. Now, remember, scenic resources depends entirely on context. What may be significant in one area may not be significant at all, just because of its distance, intervening properties, et cetera. So that's why the discretionary process kicks in, and ultimately, as I mentioned before, the decision-making body has to weigh the competing points of view and determine, I believe, from a sequoist standpoint, or from the context of this ordinance, it does not comply, or it's a significant visual impact, warranting either denial, or modification of the permit, or redesign mitigation measures. But we don't, the real difference here is, when is a discretionary permit required, which we need objective criteria to enforce? Because if we went to a judge and said, Your Honor, this gentleman has graded three cubic yards, assuming that we just relied upon significance, the judge would probably throw out the case because it's an arbitrary standard. The threshold criteria as to what requires a discretionary permit is objective criteria, and the judge can say, yes, you've met the criteria, you have it.
So do you think, I mean, is it the planning commission's collective judgment that 1,000 square feet of grading is sufficiently conservative in order to allow this flexibility that I've said is desirable? To have something, is that, is that small enough? Is that big enough? Is that number, a good number?
If I'm building a 600-square-foot house, I'm going to create a 1,000-foot path. So, yeah, that's pretty tiny. And anything less than that seems to me, I love Robert's comment, because we've gone to GIS, we have literally created layers. And so this is one layer of a whole series of layers. So I'd rather tag off the Roseanna moment. Phase two, because this gets to structures, that means that phase two then allows the amendment of the overlay within the area plan. And going back to the phase one, phase two, if we don't have the legislative authority as a baseline, then we never get to phase two. And my concern is, knowing that phase two needs to be gotten to sooner than later, I would prefer to.
Okay. How were those figures arrived at? Two feet in height, 1,000 square feet? Where'd that come from? You can see, if you look at exhibit seven, where we begin the whole comparison process, and this is my favorite table in the whole staff report, because it makes it, you know, what we have now existing and what's proposed. So you can see in the SHP, the scenic highway protection, that we want to collapse both of these things into one, there is that 1,000 square feet already. The two feet in height come from above, the scenic resource protection. So we're simply combining some of the tools that we already use and putting them in our, on our new requirement. What we're, so the grading threshold isn't as interesting to me as where I go below and look at the structure threshold. The structure threshold. The structure threshold also comes from the scenic highway protection, where, you know, new structures and reconstruction of over 50%, and expansion of over 10%. So, if you have, in this zone, a 10,000-square-foot house, and you wanna add 1,000 square feet, well, perhaps this wouldn't apply to you, or if you wanted to add, you know, 900 square feet, you'd have to get under the threshold. But the thresholds are important in planning, to be able to say, whether we look at something or not, you can build a 20,000-square-foot greenhouse with a zoning clearance, but you have to have a 20, if you wanna build 21,000, you have to have a permit. So, you know, our code is full of thresholds, so that, that's why we use these, 'cause we had thresholds, 50 cubic yards, but 50 cubic yards wasn't getting us what we wanted, the grading wasn't getting us what we wanted, which was visual resource protection.
Okay. Yeah, and I appreciate this, and this is certainly the objective standards baseline that we need to work off of, but as I look at this, something just came to mind when we talk about 50%, new structures are 50%, reconstruction exceeds 50%. And I'll paint this scenario that I know occurred, not in this area, obviously, but occurred with, within the county, where reconstruction, a third of the structure is reconstructed and permitted and signed off, and then successively, a remodel occurs again, where another third is done, bypassing the obvious 50% to the point where the entire structure has been redone, and the entire intent of the code has circumvented. How are we dealing with that? How would we deal with that in a case like this? Is there any sort of back-check situation where you can, when you get that second application, if that should come, that you can go back and say, wait a minute, we already did this once, this isn't really one-third reconstruction, it exceeds the 50% of the original intent and the original structure? How do you deal with that?
We can do, we can do that now, because we have a, we have our permits plus system that tracks. So, a lot of the, the codes that we have say you get a cumulative, like a permit adjustment. If you come in for a permit adjustment, you can do a permit adjustment on 10% of your gross floor area. Well, over the years, people have done this 10%, 10%, 10%, because we used to do it all by hand. But now, starting in 2004, we track everything electronically. So, now, we track exactly what you had before, we say, well, in 19, or in 2000, you came in and you wanted a 2,000-square-foot house, and that's what you got. So, now, if you come in, you know, you came in for 100 square feet in 2002, and now you're wanting another, that now trips the threshold. So, we now track it through our permitting program, you know, every, every square feet that's added. So, it is, it is cumulative, and we do track those.
I'd like to discuss that issue with you separately, separate from this meeting. I was saying, back to the beach. Back to the maker of the motion.
Yes. I'd like to make an assumption that my motion has, that Commissioner Duquesne hasn't disagreed with the part of the motion that throws out the half-mile, and she hasn't disagreed with having a CUP for non-residential construction. Those are the two parts of my motion. Now, I, is the significant issue satisfied? I mean, do you wanna add anything else to my motion before we try for a second?
Mr. Smith explained it away.
Okay. So, it, does anyone else wish to mess with my motion before we, before we try for a second?
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second, since I put you through on that.
We have a motion, a second, is there additional discussion? Mr. Smith?
I'm asking for clarification. Does your motion include the alteration to the phrase, minimum alteration of natural topography to include physical features as well?
I believe.
That's fine with me.
Maker and the second agree that the motion includes that. So, the way I understand the motion at this point, on page 39 of the text, the last paragraph in the overlay zone, a plan development permit will not be required if the applicant can demonstrate that the proposed grading, structures, or vegetation removal will not be visible within a half-mile from any public road, trail, park, recreation area, preserve, or lake is struck. Or there is, we are recommending that that language be struck, and adding the language that for any non-residential use, a conditional use permit is required.
Correct.
But, but there needed to be clarification about what that actually meant, because Ms. Rodriguez was going into how a garage and an artist studio and all these other things were separate and apart. But it's that way now, so if you wanna maintain it that way, then.
Yeah, I, okay, what we have, again, and county council stopped me if, we have a series of findings that we're making. We have made a minor, we've made two apparently minor changes to the recommended action, which are within the purview of the action that we have before us as an agendized item. And what the planning director is saying is that we are maintaining the status quo that, and continuing with the use of a conditional use permit where it is appropriate as it currently exists.
At this moment in time, yes.
Okay. Is there any additional clarification needed for the motion for staff?
Yes, Chair, just to move the exhibits that you received today into the record.
Will the maker of the motion and the second of the motion?
Don't move.
Also move the exhibits in, the public record?
So moved.
Second in.
One final clarification. The, does your motion also include the errata sheet presented by staff today in terms of the correction?
So moved.
Actually, yes, because it, it has to, 'cause it was, it was an exhibit.
Okay, thank you.
And it is in the record. Is there any further discussion of the motion?
May I call for the question?
We have a call for the question. I, uh, excuse me.
So, we're getting, we're getting rid of the, the development permit section entirely, and we're keeping it with the conditional use permit. Is that correct?
No, we're maintaining, we, no.
Maintaining?
We're maintaining the current status of PD, CUP.
Actually, the only amendment that you're specifically doing is you're crossing out the word PD permit, and you're putting conditional use permit. In essence, what you're doing is retaining the existing permit requirements of the existing codes.
Exactly.
Okay, which is what? Which is what Mr. Smith said that we shouldn't do, that it was wrong from the beginning, we shouldn't have a CUP. We said, well, let's come up with some kind of elegant solution about, about residential versus the other, you can't go back.
Hold, hold on a second. My motion was not to throw out all PDs, but to, yeah, I stated, any non-residential use would require a CUP.
And that's where I got in again with the, all of those uses that, in my mind, are not part and parcel of, of someone's home. Nobody has to have an artist studio.
Okay, okay. No, careful, careful, we are, but we are also only dealing with the overlay. There is a whole separate body that says these are identified ancillary uses for a residence.
Right.
So, we're back to, so we have this GIS thing, and it says A, and B, and C, and somewhere up here is the scenic overlay piece, okay? Down here, there are by right issues, and the second piece is, remember, this is a two-phase project, and the second phase is going back to these area plans and saying, okay, let's fix this facilities piece, which is what you're talking about.
I'm looking to Ms. Rodriguez for, is that about, understanding what my concern was and what you were saying about, do you mean that a house is separate from the garage? What if the garage is this big? What if the barn is this big? And, and does that answer that, that it will be fixed later? Not necessarily that it will be fixed later, but that's the way it is now. So, I mean, it's, it's not that it's, you know, horribly broken. We, we thought, as the planning department, it would be, the planned development permit is a better permit, but, you know, it's kind of no harm, no foul. If you want to move forward with the conditional use permit, and you believe that that's the appropriate recommendation that you wanna make to the board, then that's the recommendation that will go forward.
Except, if I come in and I'm in this scenic overlay area, and I wanna build a house, and the garage is enough with the house, I don't have to get a CUP according to where I put my motion. You could get a PD, because there's no other problems with it. It's only when they wanna add all these things that the problem comes up. Am I right that way?
No, I can, I can build, I can build a 10,000 or 20,000-foot, square-foot house, and I can have interior lighting, and I can do a photometric plan, and I will really irritate you, because as dusk is coming down, I'm completely within that. So, again, let's be careful what we're trying to manage at this point. I think, I think the critical thing is that we are saying, for non-residential uses, we're recommending that we retain the CUP. Okay.
Call for the question.
County Council, are we okay here? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all for participating. Moving on. Report by the planning director?
I just have, just a brief of what's upcoming for the 19th. Boy, if I thought today was a long day, the 19th is gonna probably be a very long day. We have the, the hearing for the proposed housing element update, and then also we have two permits that we really would like to get here. One of them is a major modification for an ag operation, and the other one also for the expansion of a greenhouse facility. So, both of, all three of those projects are gonna be heard on the 19th, and you're not gonna be here, right, Commissioner Duquesne?
The 19th.
Of June? I, I have you not being here. I, I do have several people that are waiting until we have a full planning commission to, to hear maybe an appeal of a height issue at the beach, so we're trying to, to really get a schedule nailed down when we're gonna have all of you again. But I, I understood that, that you weren't gonna be here on the 19th, but I just wanted to let you know that that 19th is going to be quite a busy day. Also, just as an aside, because you brought up the Tom Berge study, I just wanna let you know that, you know, that, that effort is being led by the CEO's office, and Chris Stevens, the RMA director, is working with all of the agencies to set up a working group, and that working group is going to meet for the entire week with a mediator for the last week of June. So, very soon, it's kind of coming soon, and for, for all the agencies to meet, everybody that kind of touches the entitlement process, to, to take a look at our documents, and then the tools that we use, to see what it is that we can do to get things through here quicker and, and less expensive. So, that's ongoing. And that's all I had.
Anything from the commission?
So, the next meeting's the 19th.
No, the, oh, yeah, the next meeting's the 19th.
Two weeks from today.
Two weeks from today.
Just to mention, probably by either the end of today or tomorrow, on our website, we will actually have the text, the proposed text for the housing element amendments. We will not have the planning commission staff report yet, or any of the other, like, response to the State Department of Housing and Community Development. That won't be finalized until it goes out with your packet next week. But just to let you know, if you wanna get a jump on reading these somewhat voluminous documents, they will be on our website, no later than Friday, by tomorrow.
Is there anything else? Hearing done, we stand adjourned. Thank you.